All right, we're going to start the meeting. Good evening, everyone. This is the July 11th, 2024 Town and Fishkill Planning Board Meeting, and we're calling the meeting to order at 7:00 o'clock sharp. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, civil, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Just a couple of quick announcements. Please silence cell phones, just out of courtesy for everyone here. Also speaking of the microphone, which I'm going to try to do because my voice is a little bit rough after having our grandkids over for a few days. I think I picked up a summer cold from them, but I'll try to be as loud as I can. It looks like we have six voting members here tonight and one alternate member present. Our voting member, Bob Malvarosa, indicated he would not be able to attend, so I'd like to appoint alternate member Vijay Gopal as a voting member to fill in for Bob at tonight's meeting. And also, we have Sarah Wilson filling in for Dominic Cordisco as our Planning Board Attorney this evening. Welcome, Sarah. All right, let's get right into our public hearing tonight. This will be the Homeland Towers Communications Tower, 73 Route 9, Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. At 7:00 p.m. or soon thereafter is possible. Applicants seek Site Development Plan approval and Special Use Permit approval to construct a personal wireless services facility, including a 150-foot monopole with the fenced equipment compound at the base of the facility. The parcel for the proposal is identified as Tax Map Parcel Number 615400852538, is located at 73 Route 9, and consists of 4.03 acres in the general business zoning district. Is there a motion to open this public hearing?
Some moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Ravi seconds it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that passes seven to zero. All right, welcome, Mr. Kenny. Good to see you.
Good evening, Board. Again, for the record, my name is David Kenny. I'm an attorney with Snyder &amp; Snyder. I'm here tonight to represent the applicants, Homeland Towers and Verizon Wireless, connection with their application for a 150-foot cell tower, the design of which is under review, but currently proposed as a monopole. And the cell tower is needed to support equipment for Verizon Wireless to fill in a significant gap in service along this area of Route 9. We've been meeting with the Board for several months now. At our last meeting, the topic of discussion was the design of the facility. We've proposed a couple of different alternative designs. The one that we felt was best was a dual-color pattern for a monopole. The monopole is the design that you see on the plans, and the double or the dual coating or the dual paint would be for half of the facility below the ridge line as you see it, would be painted brown, and then the portion of the facility that's seen in the sky or seen above the ridge line, a lighter color, like a light gray or a light blue color, to help blend in with the sky. One of the different stealth designs, though, that the Board asked us to provide additional information on was a flagpole design or a flagless flagpole design. So we did have photo simulations prepared of this different design, as previously informed to the Board. Because of this design, there would be a requirement for a little bit of a taller facility. So this facility would be 180 feet tall approximately. It would also be about four feet tall, or, I mean, four feet wide in diameter. It's a little bit of a thicker tower. And again, while this is a different stealth design, we also submitted a letter from our RF engineers that detailed the different reasons why this particular design would not be preferred. So if we could go through that letter, I'll briefly just go through the different negative aspects of this design. The first one being that the types of antennas that would be going in there would only be able to be the panel antennas that are usually used by the cellphone carriers. With a monopole structure, we'd have the opportunity to provide space or co-location space for emergency communications equipment. We generally use a different type of antenna that's locally known, which is called a whip antenna. Essentially, it's usually about a six-foot-tall antenna, only about a two-inch in diameter. It looks like a whip. But those types of equipment doesn't usually conform or fit within a flagpole or flagless flagpole design. The other issue would be that not only would they not be able to fit these omnidirectional antennas or the whip antennas inside, it also limits the types of equipment that Verizon or any other future cellphone carrier would be able to put into the equipment. So with these antennas, there is a loss in coverage or a loss in power from these antennas for the ones that can actually fit within a flagpole. So there would be some less antenna gain and some loss in signal strength with these smaller antennas. Also, with the space limited in the flagpole, we spoke earlier that there's a, in addition to antennas, they have these units called remote radio units that power the antennas. Generally, the carriers and the technology requirements call for these to be as close as possible to the antennas. With this type of design, we'd have to locate these at the ground and connect them with a cable. The length of that cable just can add some latency, which is a segregated service. Also, the direction of the antennas, the azimuth for where you tilt the antennas to focus the signal, that's also limited and a little bit handcuffed with a flagpole design, just there's a limited space to actually get the different directions, particularly if you're trying to downtilt to focus into a particular area. They also limit co-location space, so there is likely that with a flagpole design, there would probably be only two carriers that could really fit into this. So there's four main carriers that operate in the country right now. It's Verizon, which is your applicant, but you also have T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, and then Dish Wireless is coming out as this fourth national carrier. So with that limited co-location space, there is a higher chance that a second tower could be needed in the area because there just may not be enough space for those co-locating carriers. And again, it's very speculative if they could even fit within a flagpole, so we may not get any co-locating carriers at all. They also limit future modifications. So while Verizon has come together and figured out a design that would work for this 180-foot flagpole for today's needs, cell towers are standing for a long time, and they do go through several modifications over the years to upgrade the equipment so that it fits the current network needs. So it'd be speculative to guess at what the future network needs, but this is definitely going to, you know, make it a little bit harder to or restrict the types of antennas that can be co-located at this facility. It also calls out the maintenance questions and the actual work on the tower. So with a flagpole, there's no climbing facilities so that a tower climber could actually climb up the tower and then do work on the equipment. So it requires more bucket trucks and of the like to actually do just simple maintenance work. So that makes it a little bit harder to maintain these facilities. And then, in general, with a flagpole design that actually has the flag, the chains on the flagpoles generally do create some noise, although this is physically far from any neighbors that would hear it. But more important is with the flag that flies, an American flag, there is flag etiquette that would require that from dusk till dawn, that the flag be lit at night. So any kind of reduction in noticeably by changing this design to a flagpole, that would actually be worsened at night because now we'd have to light up the flag at night, and that's a potential for light pollution and just more noticeably of the facility. So for those foregoing reasons, our RF engineers have advised against this type of design. We still have proposed it as the Board has requested, but we feel that it's a worse technology and it's going to have, you know, has a chance of making things a little bit more difficult in the future for Verizon and any co-locating carriers, which could have the effect of requiring a second tower in the area.
And could you repeat? I think last meeting, your team had indicated roughly the diameter of the flagpole style is quite a bit larger than the monopole. Could you repeat that?
Correct. So for the flagpole, it doesn't taper at all, is straight up. It's about 38 inches wide, so almost about four feet wide. And then with a monopole that are designed, at the top of the tower, it gets to be about only two feet wide. So at the very top, it's almost twice as wide as the monopole.
Okay. Well, if there's anything else you'd like to mention before we start up public comments, feel free, but let me just get a show of hands from the audience of those who would like to speak at tonight's meeting, tonight's hearing. Okay, so we have a few. I saw one on there. All right. So is there anything else you want to add right now before we get into the hearing?
No, I think we'd also like to hear from the public and hear what their comments are and see if we can provide any responses to any of their concerns.
All right. The Board will decide at a later point whether we'll keep the public hearing open or we'll close it tonight. And then we do have a project review later on in the meeting on the agenda, so. All right. Well, what I'm going to do right now is read our Rules of Conduct for Public Hearings. This is pretty standard stuff. Speakers are asked to come to the podium and identify themselves so that their name may be entered into the record, although it's not required, but it helps us with our records of the hearing. Speakers are limited to one turn at the microphone, and speakers are limited to no more than four minutes. There will be a warning when there is one minute left. I'll keep time and track of that. Speakers should provide new information or different information from other speakers. Repetitive comments are often made, understandably, but it's preferred if just new comments that haven't been made yet are made. Speakers encouraged to submit comments in writing. We've actually already received a few written comments, so I'll mention those later. Comments are limited to matters involving the business before the Board, that is the particular application under review at this hearing. No verbal interruptions, shouting, or other outbursts or obscene language, and no speaker shall make any personal attacks intentionally or otherwise on anyone. Okay, that's good for now. So just a reminder to the public that in commenting on this matter, there are certain limitations under the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 and subsequent FCC rules and regulations that the Planning Board must follow in reviewing cell tower applications, not to mention the, our own town code provisions, which are quite lengthy and detailed. The Board has also received technical assistance and recommendations from our radio frequency consultant, Doug Fishman, who has reviewed the proposal. I'll turn to Sarah Wilson just briefly to see if you have anything further that you'd like to mention about the conduct of the public hearing or anything else that you might think of before we start up.
I don't at this time. I think you covered it, but I may have comments later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. All right. So again, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and when recognized, please come up to the podium and give us your name and address. Who'd like to be first? I see that gentleman on the side there. Either one.
Good evening. My name is Mark Renano. I'm actually not a Town and Fishkill resident. Forgive me, I showed up a little late, but I just want to clarify, this is the tower that's still going at 73 Route 9?
Correct.
Okay, the Lysicotis property.
Correct.
Yeah, please speak this way.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
And also speak to the Board, not to the audience.
Yes, I just wanted to get my information straight. Okay, so I am actually an employee of Acadia Stairs, which is on that property. I don't know how much research they've done, but there is a quarry right behind that building. And I'm a welder over there, so all day long, I can see my table doing this from the rock crusher in the back. So, you know, that's a concern. Like, I don't know if they took into account for that. When it rains there, that entire parking lot just washes away. They have to go through at least once a month and refill it, level it out. So I don't know, you know, what's involved, you know, in putting that pole in and, you know, how much they've looking in, you know, taken a look into as far as, you know, the quarry behind us, the soil washing away, you know, if it's really an ideal location. Like, there's, you know, I feel like there's a couple other locations, like there's, you know, there's a vacant mall up the street. I know that they just put one down in Cold Spring, maybe a couple years ago, right by the cemetery. So I feel like there's more suitable locations for everybody, for the people that work, like me, that work in that area. And plus, the building, one of the buildings that we have does powder coat, and we get a delivery of propane every week or so, so they actually need access to the side of that building where they plan on putting that pole. So I don't know if they've taken any of this into consideration, but I just wanted to put it out there and give my info, not as a resident, but as an employee that works right in that area.
Well, that's certainly very important to hear.
So, all right, well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who would like to be next? Yes, come on up.
Hi, my name is Michelle McGuire. I live on 233 Carolaine. I just, can I give these to you? I just have some pictures I'd like you to see.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll get them to the right guy. Thank you.
I am directly, let's see, I can see that tower that they're going to build right from my, as you can see the pictures. And it's going to be a very disruptive view from my home and as well as my neighbors. It's just, it's not the right spot, and I wish that maybe Verizon would, again, talk to Luke who has the aggregate quarry that the gentleman was just talking about, right behind Lysicotis, because they actually own around the corner, heading north, all the way to where the watershed is for Fishkill, like where the water department goes if the pipes break or whatever. They actually have a road right there, and all of that is undeveloped land because you can't build on it because the stream goes through there. But all those woods, we've spoken to Luke, who's the owner, whatever, the manager that runs the place for the aggregate, and he said he'd be more than welcome to talk with Verizon or whoever about putting the towers over there. That way, it's off of Route 9, in front of Thales entrance, the Thales. It'd be on the other side of the road, and it's all in those woods right there where there's no houses. It won't be in our view. And like I said, I gave you some pictures to see what we see. When they came and put that big balloon up, it was terrible. It's going to, you know, decrease the value of our home by looking at that because somebody's going to come and look at it and say, ugh, you know, I got to look at this. But I really would appreciate maybe if you talked to the aggregate place. There's been too many deaths on that corner, especially right in front of that stop sign where you see that corner. And if you have these big bucket trucks stopping to turn into Lysicotis', that's bad. I mean, talk to the village police, they're there all the time, and so many people have been getting killed. Whereas if you go to where Thales is and the woods across the street from that, they would have their own road, and you could do whatever you want to do. You could put up your fences, you can do whatever. You'd have your access, and it wouldn't interfere with anyone. Where you want to put it, where they want to put it, it's not a good spot. It's not. The traffic, you know, it sounds like a NASCAR at night, like after 4:00, forget it. And as far as the noise coming from the towers, that's my yard. Everyone here, excluding Verizon, you go home at night. That is my home. That's my neighbors' homes.
So you have one minute left.
And I just wish that you would really seriously think about it. Go to aggregate and find out in front of Thales entrance, but on the other side, you got all those woods, you could do whatever. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, who would like to be next?
Good evening. My name is Ed Bushak.
Welcome, Mr. Bushak. I'll just mention, you've submitted several communications to us in conjunction with the public hearing, so I'm sure you'll reference them, but I just wanted to make sure we noted that.
Yes. 238 Carolaine. I'm a neighbor of Michelle, and when they put up the red balloon, we could see, I could see it right from my kitchen, my kitchen door, right up there. And I wanted to point out that the array that is going to actually be in place is not going to be just Verizon, but they'll also have at least AT&amp;T on there and T-Mobile, maybe, and then like emergency communications. So it's going to look a lot different than a skinny pole that they've been depicting here. And it's two, it's right out in front of Route 9, right off the road. Everybody has mentioned it, you know, when you've done your reviews, it's blocking the view of Fishkill Ridge. I'm sure you've also seen, Senecutson has said that they felt it was imposing on the view of Hudson Highlands State Park also.
Yes, we received their letter, so I'm going to just mention some of their details on that later if they're not here.
All right. About the alternate sites, these are alternate sites that were in the list submitted by Verizon to the Planning Board. And some people reject, didn't answer, some people weren't interested, but we feel that some more work needs to be done by Verizon to look at some of these better-suited sites that hide this cell tower in the forest. It can be done. And they're also, they had a stretch of alternate sites from the old Fish, old Albany Post Road up to the water wells of the Village of Fishkill. So we're suggesting go into the forest, there's some service roads there, that would be the perfect spot. Let me just look at my notes again. I know that there is a, also historic battery monuments are there, and I know that SHPO is not putting too much interest in these. But I want to remind you that SHPO is also the organization that did not really fight for the supply depot either, even though that's on the historic registry.
So you have about a minute left.
Okay. So we have that, 19, I had 1995 Telecommunications Act, but let me tell you, that needs to be redone. The technologies have changed so drastically since 1995. That act was written by the telecommunications companies and pushed through because nobody knew what they were talking about. So now here we are, 29 years later, and they're still saying, you can't, you can't object to radio frequency emissions. You're not allowed to. All right. And I just want to mention, there's not enough room on that site, according to the town code, to put the cell tower. It doesn't have room on two different sides. It needs a variance from the ZBA. And I know they're in front of the ZBA petitioning for this, and they'll probably get it, but I mean, you're violating the town code, which was written for a good reason. One last thing, the gateway of Fishkill, we want to keep it beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, would anyone else like to speak tonight?
Can I just, I forgot one thing to mention.
Okay, you had about a minute left on yours.
By moving it over to north of where it is per se now, in front of Thales, next to the water department for Fishkill, wouldn't that be good for Fishkill as an income of whatever you're going to make to put these towers up? When you talked to Luke, he said he was interested in, you know, talking with you, moving it down further north, and that's a good moneymaker for Fishkill. So maybe keep that in mind, too, you know, money for the town. But I just wanted to let you know that.
All right, anyone else like to speak tonight? All right. Let me just go through a couple of things. So again, we will have to decide whether to close the public hearing tonight or continue the hearing at the August 8th meeting. There are a couple of things that I think, well, maybe more than a couple, that we'll be discussing under project reviews that I think might lead the Board toward keeping the public hearing open when we're talking about some of the site plan details that are in CPL's memo, for instance. Also, I did want to mention a little bit more specifically, the letter that we received from Jeff Anzovino, Director of Land Use Advocacy for Senecutson. I think the applicant team has seen that letter. Am I correct?
That is correct. We did receive that.
Yeah. That letter's dated July 8th, 2024. I won't read it in detail, but a couple of the things that they talk about quite extensively, and I was actually quite impressed with the detail in that letter. Require the applicant to propose alternate locations and designs for the facility in order to minimize, to the greatest extent possible, any unnecessary adverse visual impacts caused by the siting, placement, physical size of this facility as required by town code. So they're making references to the town code sections that deal with the alternate sites in particular. And it's in its conclusion on page 16, Senecutson states that due to the proposed monopole's location in a town-designated gateway in the town comprehensive plan update of 2023, its visibility in view sheds that include a state park, which is Hudson Highlands State Park, a scenic area of statewide significance, and locally significant battery monument, its siting and design that breaks the ridge line and protrudes prominently into the sky from these important locations, and the potential to diminish the public's enjoyment of these resources, particularly the battle monument. Senecutson urges the Planning Board to consider these comments and require a comprehensive look at alternative sites and designs as required in the code. I'm going to turn at this point to Liz Axelson, our planner from CPL, and I know that you did a little bit more looking into the alternative sites aspect, and I'm wondering if you could just briefly kind of run through some of the things you were looking at.
So, oops, I guess I got to move to it.
Yeah, I can kind of pull it over toward you.
So I did spend some time looking at both Mr. Bushak's letter and the Senecutson letter, and then the other thing that I did was I went back to some of the earlier submittals that listed the site search to have a look at the list and also to to have a look at the list and also to see which ones had responses or didn't, or was that even reported on. And the other thing that I was looking at was I spent a lot of time just, again, cruising up and down the stretch of Route Nine on various mapping applications, Google Earth, but mainly Duchess Parcel Access to see what sort of conditions there might be. But one thing I do want to note, I'm just going to give you a couple of little points. Both Doug Fishman and I had kind of looked at the alternate site search and, not the alternate site search, it actually was part of our code that requires numerous other sites be contacted. And he and I both kind of came to the same conclusion that the look had been sufficient. And now that we've been through the balloon test and we have a visual impact analysis with some imagery, and we've discussed it a couple of times, and now we receive public comments, it kind of raises more issues, and that is, you know, part of the process, a very important part of the process is public commentary coming in, in particular from a group like Senior Hudson. So what I found was that there were a couple of fairly viable sites. And one that I looked at was a set of Village of Fishkill lots. And it's their water system lots. It's further up, it's at a lower elevation. And when I started clicking on the various layers on Duchess County Parcel Access mapping platform, it is, it very much contains wetlands and flooded areas, and they are smaller lots. And I can, I don't know if you want me to put together a memo for the planning board after the meeting so that they can see this information. There is kind of a high spot way in the back with some high elevations, but that would involve having some kind of access back there. And it wasn't clear to me from looking at the mapping whether or not there is actually an existing road that goes back in there. So then I went to the, what everybody is referring to as the Century aggregates site. It's parcel number six eight three five nine oh. And it is a large parcel. I believe when the applicant's representative sent out letters, it, at the time, may have been two parcels and they've since been merged because there were two letters to that same parcel number. But what it does have, and let me see if I can describe it to you. If you were to go north of the site, the road kind of bends a little bit to the west or to the left. And then you're curving around, on your right is Thau Industries. But on your left, there's kind of a wooded knoll that rises up there. And it appears that maybe along the southern part of that knoll, there may be some kind of an access road. In any case, when you, when you look at the wooded area and then look at the terrain, it looks like it would be possible to find a site at approximately, I don't know, two hundred and eighty or three hundred or even three hundred and twenty feet of elevation. And I believe the proposed site is two eighty something?
I'd have to check on the plans.
Anyway, the point is I was trying to see something that looked comparable to the elevation that they have at the proposed site. So that looks like a viable site. And one of the reasons that it looked like it might have possibilities is that rather than being across from businesses and importantly, local neighborhoods and people's homes, it's across from a mining site, Clement Materials or, I'm sorry, Thau Industries. So if there was a tower there, you may have drivers coming around if the tower is set back. They might notice it, but much more of the base could be shrouded in some pretty tall trees. And there aren't homes across the street that are going to look out, say, their kitchen window or the bedroom window or be out in their yard looking at this rather imposing tower. So I really feel that that site has some merit and should be examined as an alternate site. I don't know whether there were ever any responses, but whatever was in the packets, we didn't have. We don't know, you know, those conversations, but I think it would be worth it for that site to be examined. I suppose the site further north could also be examined, just so at least we know what the applicant's experts think of that. And that is the one with the Village of Fishkill lots. It's parcels eight seven four oh two eight, nine four oh oh five, and nine two nine zero zero eight. But the one that's in the back that joins up with kind of a hillside where there might be a site for a tower is parcel number eight seven four oh two eight. So I feel that those two should be examined to see if there's any possibility. And I think the board needs to consider these kinds of alternatives because the major impact right now, that, we, I don't think we have the full picture. I know that Senior Hudson noted, we're looking at simulations that aren't showing all of the antennas. So we're not really seeing the bulk of what those neighbors would see. You know, we're seeing one row, one, you know, set of antennas, but we're not seeing the full picture. So I think we need those simulations also, showing at least three layers of tower, of antenna, if not four. And then also would be worth it to have some kind of response about what's possible and maybe even some imagery, if there's a way to do that, from these other two sites.
So in my recollection, in the alternative site analysis that was submitted by the applicant is that the two main site, alternate sites that you're referring to were listed as sites where no responses were received from the owners of those parcels, if that's correct?
That is correct. At our very first meeting, we actually presented an alternatives analysis, and that was one of the first things that the chairman picked up on was that there was no responses from Century aggregates as well as a couple of other alternative sites. And we actually resent out letters to those sites at the direction of this board, and we still don't have any responses to them. So just from an initial point, for a site to be available to us, it, there's twofolds it has to work. It has to work from a technical standpoint, and then it also has to be leasable, it has to be available to us. So the first thing that, and Klaus will go through it for the, the work that he did to find this exact site. But just as a point, we first look at sites to see if there's an ability to get the lease, and then we go to Verizon and try to confirm with them if this would work from a technical standpoint. So we can review those sites again a little bit more detail from a technical standpoint. But as of today, those sites are not available to us. We've tried. We've resent letters at the direction of this board, and we have no response, and no responses at no. One of the first things they do regarding the Village of Fishkill properties is review municipal properties because we would like to work with municipalities. We just don't have those as available to us right now. But Klaus is the one that actually went through and found this exact site, so he can give you more detail on that search.
Okay, that would be good.
Good evening, Klaus Wimmer with Homeland Towers, I'm a regional manager and project manager for this site, for this project. So as David mentioned, I do the, the site acquisition aspect in the beginning. And the process is that you look for suitable locations that you think might provide good spots for a site. And from a geographic perspective and also, you know, as far as residence and constructibility goes, and then you send out letters to these property owners, which we did, certified letters. And as David mentioned, we did not receive a response on, on a number of those, or, or if we did receive a response, there was subsequently then no interest from that party. On this particular property that Liz mentioned, the Village of Fishkill, I called the village several times and then spoke to the village clerk, Mr. Brachard. And he indicated that they are not interested in this, in a cell tower lease at that property. And also, I also looked at that wooded knoll that Liz described that's opposite the quarry. And we twice sent letters to the owners and never heard back from them.
How, how recently can I ask that question?
After our first meeting, when was it, January of this year?
Well, that's possible. I know there was some change in ownership of parts of that parcel, which became merged with like two adjacent parcels. And I'm just wondering if there might have been some, you know, overlap in terms of ownership where the owners of the new parcels may not have really understood.
No, I don't think so. The mailing in January was certainly to the, to the owner of that parcel. And it was merged. I think there was at one point, there was a camp there, some sort of wooded camp or something like that?
Yes, I think one of the parcels had a camp, campground.
But these two parcels got merged and we sent a letter to the current owner.
Okay, well, thanks, thanks for the update.
And just one point, it wasn't that, you know, we just started looking last year. Klaus, the letters that go back in that first analysis date back to twenty seventeen. So it's been a long time to try to find a leasable site that would actually work from a technical standpoint here. And from our record, I believe we found the only site that's available for this use.
So, yeah, Liz, do you have any other thoughts? After that, I was going to ask Sarah Wilson to sort of weigh in on just this whole issue of looking further at alternative sites.
Yeah, I guess my only question is, I, we're aware that the applicant has, has tried to make contact by mailing letters, and I just don't know if there's anything more that can be done to try to, try to just get an answer from the owner, you know, so we have something definitive instead of, you know, the applicant's folks, you know, can only mail them a letter, I guess. And so that's my question. Is there anything the board can do to find out, or is it out of?
Again, the reason for the letter is to document it in writing. A phone call, you have to just, you know, you take our word for it that we had a phone call and someone said something. That's why the letter, especially by certified mail, it documents when it was sent and that was received. I mean, again, at the direction of this board, as soon as we were asked to resend additional letters, that was one of the first things we did in January. So I kind of feel that this is an asked and answered question. We've looked at alternative sites. I'm happy to look at some of these sites again from a technical standpoint because I think the further north we're going, it creates a technical issue because this site is also has to be located so that it connects to the other existing sites. So from our radio frequency justification maps, there is a site in Phillips Town called North Highlands. And then there's the three sites that are along I-84 in the Village of Fishkill and in the town. So we're kind of positioned in an area where we have to be so close to those towers or within a distance so that it can connect and have seamless coverage. So again, Klaus looked at sites that would be available from a leasing standpoint. And then afterwards, once a slight, a site becomes available, then we go to Verizon and confirm if it would work from a technical standpoint. I would believe that the sites that are further north that have been requested, there may be some technical issues, and we can have our RF engineers look into that. But still, at this point, those sites aren't available to us, and we've had repeated attempts to try to make them available. So I really don't know. I understand we could continue to ask, but I think those are going to be fruitless tasks.
I mean, the one is really just kind of right around the corner. I understand that the village lots are further up the road. You know, they're, they're getting close to their south Duchess Mall. So, so that one I understand, it's just that this one is kind of right around the corner.
And by this one, you're talking about six eight three five nine oh?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
And I'd have to see the map because I don't see it. But again, if it's a site that's located in, we're talking about Century aggregates owned property?
Yes.
Again, we've, we've.
This site, this, the one we're talking about now is actually very large, and it has quite a bit of frontage in different parts of Route Nine. And so it actually starts off just north of your proposed site. So there are most likely portions of that site that would be quite similar, you know, location wise, but a little bit farther away, for instance, from the residential neighborhood. And depending on the topography of the portion of the site that you were looking at, you know, it might, it might be suitable. So I think that's something we're kind of hoping to look into a little bit further.
Sure. But from, from a standpoint, if it's owned by Century aggregates, and we've already numerous times requested use of their property, and they have given no interest to working with us, again, this is a conversation we had at the very first meeting in January. My more comment about the technical feasibility of the sites to the further north were maybe more related to the public comments I heard about trying to get this as far north as possible.
So Sarah, do you have any thoughts?
Thank you, Chair. Just, just a few. The town code does require that, to the extent sites are unavailable, that you provide some type of evidence that there was attempts, whether it's copies of the certified letters, I'm not sure if that was done. I defer to Debbie.
It was already submitted. So basically what happened in our December application, we submitted that, what is called an alternatives analysis, which included all the documentation of the certified mailings to different properties. The chairman noticed that a few of those properties didn't respond, but the last times the letters were sent were back in twenty seventeen. So he asked us reasonably to resend letters. So we did resend the letters. We still have no responses since January.
Well, so that's really my question. If the analysis was provided in December and you sent more letters in January, then that would tell the board the effort that's been spent by you as the applicant to seek out alternatives. And it's required by one fifty twenty, one twenty-six of the code. So my suggestion would be that to the extent you haven't heard back, that you give that documentation to the planning board so that then they know. So Liz isn't then looking at alternative sites, and you've satisfied your burden under the town code.
We have. So we submitted that as well.
From January too?
Yeah, we submitted this supplemental alternatives analysis. So we submitted this. This is, again, I know you're new right now, but this is something that's been discussed at prior meetings, and I feel, I truly feel it's an asked and answered questions. You know, we first went out and did our, you know, due diligence to try to find less intrusive sites or other sites that might be available. I truly, again, feel like this is the least intrusive site. But again, once we were asked to resend letters, we definitely resent the letters and we provided the data to the board.
Okay, then I think that satisfies what you have to do as the applicant, and thank you for the update. As far as the board wanting you to inquire further, I think that's a balance because it's a risk for you to continue if there are visual issues. And if you have a visual impact study and visual analysis that could sink your proverbial ship, then that's up to you. But now that you're getting more feedback and there's other suggestions, I don't think that it's something that can be forced. The application is the application. But Senior Hudson, they had some relevant feedback, and I think that that could put up some obstacles, if you will.
I disagree. I will have a response to the Senior Hudson letter, but I do feel some of their comments were not exactly factually correct. And I do believe that some of their comments were completely out of context. One of their views they were complaining about was the view of the tower from the Hudson Highlands Park. This is the view of that right there. You have to look across the industrial quarry operation, and I'm not sure you can actually see the balloon. Again, this is beyond five thousand feet away. So, you know, while we, we, we. So, you know, while we have the visual resource analysis, and we will provide a response from our visual resource experts regarding the Sinek Hudson letter, but I think the Sinek Hudson letter kind of echoed a lot of the comments that we were discussing at the last meeting, which was whether or not the trees along Route 9 could provide screening for this facility. I think it's very well documented in our visual resource analysis that while there are going to be views of the facility, it is a line of sight technology where there has to be some visibility of the facility in order to get the signal to the actual Route 9 in the area of need. But as we've documented, once you go up the road a little bit with the bend, you know, you're no longer able to see the tower, and once you go down towards Phillips Town a little bit, you're not able to see the tower. So the visibility of the tower is really in front of three industrial properties, and again, the visibility of the tower is limited in the fact that there's no sidewalks along Route 9. So the viewer that's viewing this tower is driving in a 55 mile per hour car. That really does mean that their visibility of this tower is very limited and for a short duration. The trees along Route 9 do block most of, most of the views, and we've documented that with the balloon test. And again, you know, previous comments regarding the tower blocking the view of the ridge, I think is, is overblown. It's a very small slender profile. While you may be able to see it from some vantage points, it definitely doesn't shield the entire view of the ridge. And again, along this section of Route 9, there is above ground utility poles. So, you know, there is similar public infrastructure along this section of the roadway in the direction of the mountain, and it's hard to understand why, you know, several hundreds or dozens of above ground utility poles aren't preventing a visual impact, but one slender monopole is going to be the thing that overturns the apple car.
So I think so far I've heard a lot of information about the possibility of looking at alternate sites. We heard that from the public comments tonight. We heard you indicate the possible willingness to look into from a technical aspect, the two alternate sites, or at least the one that's further south, I mean, you know, closer to the existing site. The board's going to have to determine whether to close the public hearing tonight, so I'll ask again for some feedback from our consultants on that, but we are going to have some more discussion on this under project review. So I think my suggestion for now is let's hold the question of closing the public hearing until we get to the agenda discussion of the project review, and we can revisit the closing or keeping open of the public hearing after we go through the project review and have a little bit more information, because there's a lot of information that we're going to talk about in CPL's review memo. We can talk a little bit more detail about Sinek Hudson's letter, which you indicated you would provide a response to. And actually, it would be good, you know, for the applicant, whether we close the public hearing tonight or not, to provide written responses to what we've, you know, heard so far tonight in the letters we received and the comments from the public. So that, with all that, I'm right now leaning towards keeping the public hearing open until the August 8th meeting, but I'm willing to reserve my own judgment on that until we go through the rest of the project review. And so rather than hold up the other agenda items that we have tonight, I think we could move on, go to the project review, and then make that determination later. What do you think about that, Sarah?
I think that sounds good, Chair. The only thing I would note that Dominic wanted to make sure everybody kept in mind was the shot clock that I believe expires August 19th, so there's only one more meeting before that, should there not be an agreement amongst the parties.
Yep, and that's another thing I was going to bring up during the project review rather than now.
I jumped the gun out.
But I'm glad you mentioned it, and.
I just want to state, one, I misspoke earlier and said that the flagless flagpole would be 38 inches in diameter. Klaus corrected me, it would actually be 44 inches in diameter, so I just wanted to correct the record on that. I can briefly go through and respond to the public comments, but if you'd like for me to do that during project review, I leave it for the board.
Well, also, I think we'd rather not have all the full responses to the public comments tonight, but rather in writing and submitted to the board, that's how we would like to handle it.
We absolutely will do that. I just didn't know if you wanted me to speak, since they came out tonight, if I could address any of their concerns.
No, I think rather than take the time now, and again, some of those things will come up again during the project review anyway, but.
Absolutely.
And I, Jonathan, I just, the one question I wanted to get confirmation from, from Sarah, which I think I know the answer to. So the applicant has tried several times to reach out to the property owners, and the one that looks like a decent site, but they have not had a response from, I'm assuming that it's only appropriate for the applicant to reach out to that property owner, that it wouldn't be appropriate. But I'm just trying to find out, is there any role for the board to be able to ask that question by letter or mail or anything like that?
I would advise against it.
Okay.
It's their application.
That's why I'm asking, I wanted.
I would let them take the lead.
Yep, okay, that's why I asked the question, I appreciate that, thanks.
All right, so if the board is okay with my suggestion to decide whether to close or keep the public hearing open when we get to the project review on this, we have a lot more to talk about with this project tonight, unless, unless anyone has a feeling strongly one way or the other.
No, but I would say at a minimum, I know that there was some strong public comment tonight, even if we do move toward closing the public hearing tonight, that we at least extend a written comment period for the, you know, to the rest of the week or the rest of next week, just to allow some additional written comment, even if we go the route of closing tonight. But that would be a suggestion and something we can talk about.
All right, yep.
I would also like to keep it open to see what the ZBA says.
ZBA's not going to do anything after their meeting this week.
There is a meeting this week, but the ZBA can't act on our application until this board takes an action on secret.
Okay.
All right, unless I hear other thoughts on this, let's move on to the next item, and then we'll come back to the project review for Homeland Towers a little bit later. I see hands up in the audience, so the hearing is still open. Are these questions you want to ask?
I want to know, can he give me one of his cards, because like I said, I've spoken to aggregate Luke who's in charge, and he's the one who said he's more than willing to speak to somebody for the property that's right near the water department. There's a, a road.
Why don't you come up to the microphone, just so we can make sure it's.
Thank you.
Votable.
I don't know his last name, but his name is Luke at the aggregate place, and he was the one that said he'd be willing to talk to somebody about the parcel that's near the water department, because there is the road that is, that the trucks drive in there, the town of Fishkill guys park in there all the time, and it's directly across from the entrance of Thales on the other side of the road. And the water department is there whenever, like I said, the water goes out, because I guess it goes as far as the, the, the trailer park past the companion pet hospital, that's the cutoff for the water. So whenever there's a break in the pipe, that's where they're parked. And like I said, it's a road that goes in, they drive in, and there's a building or whatever back there, but Luke said that to come and talk to him, and, you know, he can, you can do something over there.
So this is Luke at the water department?
No, at the, um.
Okay, so.
Aggregate.
So how does Luke know about the water?
Because his, that's where that property goes right to. The, the water department, which is Fishkill.
It's the village of Fishkill.
Our village of Fishkill.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, that's leasing whatever money maker for Fishkill, but he said you can go over there where there's no houses.
Well, okay, but all right, we don't want to get into a discussion back and forth with you, but we have to be careful when we're talking about who's being contacted as the owner of a parcel versus a guy named Luke who.
Because he's there every day, the gentleman is there every day.
He's next to the water site, he's not involved with the village, per se, you're saying.
No, he's the owner of the aggregate, the quarry, he's, he's the owner, not Thales, but on the other side. He owns all that property, and he said to come and see me, he says, you can use the other side, just a little bit north where.
So Luke may be a representative or one of the owners of this other parcel, which I don't know.
That merged and everything, it was Snow Valley, and it was Snow Valley Campground, and, you know, it all merged.
All right, so that's enough for tonight. This gives, you know, the applicant perhaps some further information.
But if you want to see him, go there.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, this is all good information for the applicant to know about. When we talk more about it under project reviews, we can get a little bit more into the Sinek Hudson letter specifically, we can get a little bit more into this discussion about alternate sites, but for now, let's leave it, and we'll come back to it later. Thanks. And if anyone, you know, who spoke or is interested in the Homeland Towers site, you're welcome to stay to hear the project review. It probably shouldn't take too long to get to it, although we have, we do have a couple of good agenda items before we get to it, so. All right. So the next item on the agenda is a sketch plan review and discussion for the Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail Duchess Manor Restoration and Site Design, Board to Review and Discuss the Submission Made by the Applicant's Representative on June 26, 2024. I'm going to be recusing myself on this item. I'm currently serving on the Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail Visitation Data Committee, which I think I mentioned at the last planning board meeting. So while I'm on that committee, and we're doing some really good work, which I'll fill the board in more on at another time, but while I'm on that committee, I'll recuse myself from any review or approval of Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail matters that may come before the board, including the Proposed Visitor Center project at Duchess Manor on Route 9D that has just been submitted for sketch plan. So I'll ask Vice Chair Anthony Brozier to fill in as chair for this matter tonight, and I'm going to go sit in the audience and listen to the presentation.
Thank you. Since tonight's item is a sketch plan review and discussion, there is no formal application made to this board at this time, so with new applications, usually we open for informal public comment, we're not going to do that tonight. My understanding is this is just the presentation and the opportunity for the board to provide any initial input or thoughts, so that is how I would intend to proceed tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. That's exactly what we intend, just to sort of generally walk the board and staff and consultant team through the Duchess Manor Restoration and Site Improvement Plan. There are two lots that are the subject of this application. One is the Duchess Manor Lot, the other is 14 Chorus. Both lots are owned by Hudson Highland Fjord Trail, Inc., and they join each other. HHFT currently uses the structure on 14 Chorus for its staff offices pursuant to a special use permit that this board granted back in September of 2023. What is needed from the planning board for this application is a site plan approval, a special use permit, a certificate of appropriateness, because the Duchess Manor building is on the National Register, and a lot line revision, because we are intending to merge the two lots. After tonight's presentation, HHFT plans to submit a formal application to this board, seeking all the necessary approvals. We are intending to submit the application by the July 24th deadline and hopefully be back before this board for the August meeting for the board to accept the application and get feedback and questions on the formal submission. We're happy to answer any questions tonight, but just, we're hoping to be back very soon. And with that, standing next to me is Amy Casala, the Executive Director for Hudson Highland Fjord Trail. She is going to walk you through the presentation deck, and we also have Aaron Werner right there, who is a consultant with AKRF, and he is working on the environmental assessment form to be submitted as part of the application.
Very good, thank you. You answered a few of my questions about what your next steps were, so I appreciate that. Ms. Casala, the floor is yours.
I'm going to pass it off, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so let's just take a walk through. The goal of this is just to give you a high level overview of the site and our plans for that, so that when this dense packet comes before you, you have at least some kind of bearings on what's, what we're proposing. So again, this is the visitor center for the Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail, which is a proposed 7.5 mile linear park stretching between Long Dock Park and Beacon and the village of Cold Spring. So right now, we're located right in the middle is the visitor center at Duchess Manor. Just more about the project, we have, you know, this is part of something else, where we're trying to really transform some of this landscape. I think the work we're doing at Duchess Manor, which has lawn and ornamentals, we're really looking at how we can restore things like hydrology and native landscaping in keeping with sort of the larger ecological vision for the project. So Duchess Manor, we purchased in 2020 with the intent of turning this into our visitor center and staff offices. It had used, been used for decades as an event hall, so it's been in a public kind of restaurant event sort of space for, for a very long time. This just gives you a little bit of an aerial view from the river of the site, so that's the building as it stands now, and as Helen mentioned, we also purchased 14 Chorus, which is right here, as an adjacent parcel, to look at how those parcels relate to each other. The Duchess Manor is on a 6.6 acre parcel, but they have this odd shape here, so that's hence why we have 14 Chorus, to get the rest of this land, and that's a 5.6 acre parcel. There's two parcels are zoned differently, so one is the restricted business and the other is a residential zone. So what are our plans for the building itself? We've been looking at a lot of historic photos of the building to see what it really looked like before additions occurred. It is on the National Register of Historic Places. It was originally built in 19, 1868. It's really a great site that shows a lot of the history of the region from agricultural shipping to brick making and then into sort of more events and kind of today's uses as the event hall that preceded our purchase of it. The building has been added onto over those years, so you have the original structure in yellow, two different additions in 1947, 1989, and then 2007. So this footprint has grown over time with those different additions of ballrooms and other sort of event spaces. So we would propose to try to take it back to this original footprint and the original 1889 structure. And so we've been, again, looking at different photos, you see this was in 1948 with more limited additions, 1950, and then 1960, you start to see more of these additions coming And so we've brought in Stephen Tilly Architects, they've got a great track record with historic restorations, and so they've worked on things locally like the Garrison Institute, Lindhurst, but they have a very good portfolio and expertise in how to restore this, and it's actually been fun to watch them work, you know, looking under flooring to see what lies beneath and, you know, probes and walls to see where the original brick is, so it's a discovery process. So for the exterior, the restoration priorities that we're looking at is where add-ons were occurred, sometimes you lost some wall in that, particularly. Sometimes you lost some wall in that, particularly in the back, so repairing those exterior walls and putting them back to their original space. We've evaluated the paint removal opportunities. Can we get this down to the original brick before it was painted? Restoring the roof up here was originally slate, so we'd like to put that back to an original, a slate roof. And then rebuilding exterior trim details. Some of the woodwork has some damage. Other parts like this back deck is not there anymore, so that would have to be done. And the woodworking details, we would like to restore to the original patterns that it had. So we'll go from basement to the top floor, just to get a look. So this would be, you know, some utility space, storage space, sort of a flex workspace for, you know, education class, for example. There is this piece in the basement. You can see an exterior wall that has the kitchen built on top of it right now, but it is this original footprint of this. So we'd like to daylight that. It has a wall also and a staircase, but right now, just the whole industrial kitchen, for the commercial kitchen, is put on top of that. So it's interesting, you can peek out and see these pieces. And then, just to point one other addition, obviously, we'd have to put in an elevator. So that's, would be in this shaft here, where there currently is sort of a channel of bathrooms and a dumbwaiter that had been in that space. So that made a nice space to be able to accommodate this. On the first floor, so this is the main entry inn in the stairwell, this would be a multi-use room for displays, a meeting space, but mostly interpretive exhibits would be in that space. When a visitor comes in the first door, at first, there'll be a visitor's welcome center with somebody sat after a desk and maybe some water bottles that if they need that for the hike, that we could make sure they're hydrated. And a bathroom facility here, and this would be a kitchen for the staff. And just to point out, I mentioned it already, but restoring the back patio is something. And then this shows you the first floor where that piece that's in the basement used to be, and that's something we would be rebuilding as well off of the kitchen. So you see that here. On the second and third floors, this is just office space. So these are all the original bedrooms reconfigured into different storage, copy room, bathrooms, office space, and meeting space. So on the second floor, and similarly, some co-work spaces. I'm trying to fit as many people here as we can on the third floor. And again, you can see how this elevator has reached to the third floor. So just a high-level overview from the outside, you can see this two-story restored piece off of the kitchen, the restored porch and the back porch put back. And actually, when you're in the basement, you can peek into a crawl space, and the original footings of the porch are still there. So then the landscape. So we continue to work with scape, landscape architects on the landscape. This is the site plan. So dotted line, you see where the two parcels are. We're treating this as a campus in this drawing. So right now, you have the original structure here, an event lawn and space, a bathroom structure for somebody just hopping on the trail, a parking area that's paved, and a seasonal parking lot area that's gravel, is the way we're looking at this, because obviously more visitors in the summer. And then trying to keep as much vegetation into this. So they're calling it a parking forest, but we really want to make sure it's not just a swath of parking. So I think I talked about this already, but, you know, this would be paved, crushed granite. We have different pathways delineated and pavers. And then there's a planting strategy that has a few different layers, which you can see out on the side here, and I'll just walk you through those. So there's different planting pallets that we've identified for these different locations. So for the area in the paved area of the parking, as well as the entry, we're looking at pulling basically the plant pallet from the mountain across the street into the landscape. So that has tulip trees, red oaks mix. So we're pulling those trees across the street again, and then putting in this little mix of columbine ferns, witch hazel, lobush blueberries. And this just shows you some of the mix of the forest across the street. Right immediately in front of the house, we would be having more of a forest edge with flowering dogwoods and other flowering perennials, as well as red bud trees. So in the spring, it's going to be a beautiful flowery spot. On the outskirts of this area, including along the roadway, it would be more of a successional meadow with this mix. And this just kind of shows a precedent of what that would look like. And then we've been giving a lot of thought to the drainage on the site and how there is sort of a seasonal stream that goes down this way, and the water wants to go that way. So we're trying to accommodate it with a bio swell, and that would have its own, you know, plant pallet of things that can deal with getting wet and dry in cycles, like Joe Pie and the red dogwoods. And then behind the, our event lawn space here, there's just the slope of the hill. We started to do some invasive remediation on that, with the hope that we can get those under control enough to have a successful meadow restoration. So that would just be a planted wild meadow behind. Vehicular circulation, just, we do think, you know, perhaps we would have a school group come, so we did want to think about where buses might park if they're coming. So that's shown here, circulation of people coming in if we were to have an event. There's loading, unloading, or getting paper deliveries, what have you, for the office. Remember, we're also operating a shuttle, so we have thought through where the shuttle would be located. So this provides space for that to pull over. That's right near the bathrooms, and then they can circle back out. Because this is going to be an event lawn, and the whole project is designed to be ADA, we are looking at how we can make sure all of these pathways and entries are ADA. So there's different ways to connect to make sure you could have an accessible entrance to the back of the building as well as to the front of the building. We're still working on concepts for the bathrooms, but these would be outdoor toilets, and then possibly some picnic area for people if they just want to stop. There might be a food truck that could park here, so that gives somewhere place to eat if you've finished your hike and you just want to have a snack. Just a different view of where that is situated relative to the scale and location of the building. And then people always ask me, so I just put this in, is how are we going to connect down, because this is a bitty sloped hill. It would be switched back to have ADA and maybe a staircase that would allow somebody to move more quickly down that slope. And that's it. Any questions?
First off, thank you for the very detailed presentation. I think at this point, you know, to get to a point where we're not even at a new application to have this level of detail is helpful in at least initiating the discussion and allowing our board to kind of chew on this before we get the formal application. So that is much appreciated by this board. I don't have any comments at this time, but I do want to, you know, allow the board an opportunity, if they have any questions at this point. Next month, they'll be making their formal submittal, so it will be before our board as a new application. So there will be another opportunity as well, but certainly.
If I could. First, this is great. I love, I love the presentation. And I'm a lone duck all the time walking that trail. So if you can go back one slide, the future trail connection?
Yeah.
So the trail, where is the trail? Is the trail on the bottom there? Is that what the?
This is the planned route, right? So that's in environmental review right now, and so that's sort of future looking. But right now, we're just focused on activating the site.
No, I'm curious about where that trail is going to be, because I'm looking forward to hopefully one day being able to walk that. So.
Me too.
Okay. No, it's great. I think everything you're doing is great. So we look forward to this. So thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
I'm a previous owner in RV. Are you going to have any RV parking or any place where RVs are going to be?
Oh, RVs. We haven't discussed RVs, but.
Yeah, when I originally looked at the plan you submitted earlier, I didn't see anything for, I did see something for some buses, but a lot of RVs are going to stop you.
Just to stop for the day? They would probably have to use the bus locations, or they'd be taking up quite a few parking spaces.
Well, that's why I'm asking if you're going to have someplace where they can, because RVs don't get, not going to be welcome in Cold Spring or in Beacon themselves, where they'd be able to get on the train and come.
Okay, I'll talk, I'll take that back to the team.
Thank you.
I think it's spectacular.
Thank you.
I, I think that was great. I think it's wonderful that you're trying to bring it back to its original look in a world where that's not happening. People are just tearing down and rebuilding. So that's really great. I, I think it's spectacular.
Like I said at the beginning, it's a, it's a fun discovery.
Yeah. I, I think it's amazing.
Thank you.
I think, yeah, it looks nice, the whole idea. Just out of curiosity, when do you expect everything to be completed?
Well, we have to get through this process.
After the process, how long do you think, how long do you think?
Then we think it's about a year for construction.
That's it?
No questions.
A year? That seems really quick.
I know.
It does. It seems quick. But I'm glad you got it and not a developer who was going to put 20 houses there and rip down that beautiful estate.
Right. And that's why the family, I think, wanted to make sure it was safe.
No questions.
Can I ask a question?
This is not an open, public.
It's more about the process. When the public, when the public is, is that the next meeting?
The next meeting, the applicant will make the submittal, the formal submittal, in time for the next meeting, for the August meeting. So at the August meeting, we'll have the formal package. And at that time, we, this board will determine whether that application's complete, and at that point, we'll accept that application and begin the process of review. And at some point down the road, there will be a public hearing. And at next month's meeting, for the new applications, we do welcome informal public comments. So at next month's meeting, if you have any informal public comment, we would entertain those as well. To our consultants, I don't know, Liz, is John, is there if there's any comments or thoughts at this point?
No, I, I don't have any. I think it's a, an exciting project, and, you know, I look forward to helping it along.
I don't have anything. It's nice to see you again. Nice to see you, Helen, Erin. Always a pleasure. But the project does look wonderful. Whoever does the graphics is very talented. Always nice to see. But I think it's just exciting in general from a non-legal perspective. So, good luck.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you, and we'll be seeing you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. And I'm glad I stayed and saw the presentation. Very nice. Thanks. Okay, we have a new submittal. This is the Fishkill Commerce Center Site Development Plan, Flood Plane Development Permit and Freshwater Wetlands Water Course Water Body Permit. Applicant seeks a Site Development Plan Approval, Flood Plane Development Approval, and Freshwater Wetlands Water Course Water Body Permit to construct a 388,000-square-foot warehouse facility with 81 tractor-trailer parking spaces, 221 employee parking spaces, 70 loading docks, and two drive-in ramps, along with associated landscaping, lighting, utilities, stormwater controls, and grading improvements. The project will be on the southern end of the parcel, and site access to US Route 9 will be from the existing driveway at the south end of the parcel. It's located at 387 Route 9 and consists of 62.39 plus or minus acres in the planned industry zoning district. The entire parcel is located in the AE Zone 100-year flood hazard area, and the proposed finished floor of the project shall be at least two feet above the flood plane elevation in compliance with FEMA regulations. So tonight, this is to refer the application to the Town Engineer, Town Planning Board Attorney, Duchess County Department of Planning and Development, New York State Department of Transportation, and the Rambout Fire District for review and comment. And the planning board will allow informal comments from the public after discussion of this application. So I understand that the applicant has submitted the required application fees and escrow deposit?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. Well, welcome, applicant team. Jennifer Gray, I know Jennifer from a number of things in the planning field, and in particular, from the New York Planning Federation, things that we're both involved in. But that won't stop me from reviewing this project. In fact, I'll make sure I take a very close look at it.
I wouldn't expect anything less.
So, welcome, and please feel free to tell us about this proposal.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Jennifer Gray, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Keenan Bean in White Plains, and we're representing Skanel Properties on this application before you tonight. Chairman Cantor stole a little bit of my thunder, giving you some of the details of the project. But we are here for the application for the construction of what we're calling the Fishkill Commerce Center on property located at 387 Route 9, which everybody knows as the Fishkill Golf Course behind the former Duchess Mall. So the Fishkill Commerce Center is proposed to be a new warehouse building, consisting of about 388,000 square feet with associated parking and loading and lighting, stormwater management, landscaping, and all those other, you know, similar site elements. The site does consist of about 62 and a half acres, and it is in the planned industry PI district. I'm joined tonight by representatives of Skanel. We have tonight Dan Madrigal, who's the Director of Development, and also Jack Kelly, Development Associate at Skanel, as well as the project's professional consultants from McFarland Johnson. We have Glenn Harvey, who's a professional engineer, and also Steve Bouvier. So as the chairman mentioned, this is our first appearance before your board tonight. So I'll review some of the nuts and bolts of the application. I'll turn it over to Dan Madrigal to go through, introduce you to Skanel, give you a little bit of background and history about the company, so you know who it is that's before you. And then I'll turn it over to Glenn to walk through the project itself. So as far as the nuts and bolts are concerned, our application does consist of a Site Development Plan application, freshwater wetlands permit, flood plane development permit. And folded into all of that is a request for a reduction in the off-street parking requirement. You may recall, I was here a little over a year ago now on the warehouse project on the Duchess Mall property, and similar to that, where we requested a relief for the off-street parking requirement, the demand here for off-street parking will be similarly much less than what's required by your code. For secret purposes, we are a type 1 action. There's actually two triggers for the type 1. The disturbance area does exceed 10 acres, and we're also proposing, obviously, more than 100,000 square feet of GFA. So we did submit a full environmental assessment form, along with a pretty extensive environmental assessment report that has all of the studies, you know, such as a stormwater report, traffic impact study. The team has already consulted with SHIPPO, and we do have a letter of no effect. There's a Phase 1 environmental assessment report in there as well, wetland delineation, and Glenn can go through a little bit more of that with you when the time comes. Generally speaking, we do believe that this is a good location for this particular development. It is consistent with the zoning code. It's It's sort of tucked behind that former Duchess Mall property. So, you know, this being kind of the southern gateway to the town as you come up Route 9, we think there's going to be minimal visual impacts to that southern gateway. Obviously, we're aware of some of the site constraints. We're aware that there's a good amount of wetlands on the property. But the project has been carefully designed to avoid those wetlands and their buffers. There's a couple minor incursions that Glenn can highlight for you, but for the most part, it does avoid those natural resources. And of course, you know, with the warehouse development, increasing the town's tax base and providing employment opportunities are a good thing. So I'm going to turn it over to Dan to walk through and introduce you to Skanel, give you a little background, and then we'll turn it over to Glenn. Thank you.
Thanks. Hello. Again, my name's Daniel Mader, I'm a Director of Development with Skanel. Thank you very much for your time and attention for considering our application tonight. Thank you. Give you a brief little later overview on Skanel. Again, Skanel Properties, we were... Started in 1990 from Bob Skanel. He's formerly of Duke, one of the larger industrial real estate companies in the United States, who started his own in 1990. And now Skanel is one of the largest in the United States. As of the last few years, we did expand into Europe as well. So we've got nine locations in the United States as well as nine in Europe. As far as territory we cover, we do cover, not me personally, but the United States and... Or, I'm sorry, Skanel does cover the entire United States. This gives an idea of projects we did throughout North America, which includes 300 build-to-suits and 198 spec projects and over 4 million in New York as well alone. As far as the differences between the build-to-suit projects and speculative projects, I get that a lot. And the differentiation there, for those who don't know, is a build-to-suit is when we come to a site where we have a known tenant in hand, and we're building specifically for them versus a speculative, such as in this case, we identify a location, we build it to be as flexible as possible to obtain or attract those Fortune 500 companies that we generally tend to do business with most often. As far as points of differentiation from us versus our competition in general, again, Skanel, due to our size and our financial strength, we're able to move a lot more nimble and quicker than most of our competition. The main difference there is that we use our own money. Majority of our competition tends to need to go out and find capital, stack capital resources. Thankfully, Skanel, through Bob Skanel, has been fortunate enough to use our own capital 98% of all of our projects. We do keep everything in-house in regards to, we have our own legal, development, construction management, basically all different aspects of development, with the one exception being general contractor. We do not hold the general contractor in-house. One of our competitive advantages is we go out and competitively price that with three or four. Usually, it's a combination of a couple of local general contractors as well as a couple of regional general contractors. As far as core markets, you know, the typical industrial markets predominantly. We do do student housing as well. But really, our bread and butter is along these core segment lines. Of course, most recently, the last few years, it's been distribution, warehouse, as well as e-commerce and fulfillment centers has been, you know, the most talked about. Here, it just gives you a little sense, a little flavor of our clientele, or, sorry, our most common repeat clientele. Over 79% of our projects are with repeat clients. So a lot of the names that you may know. This, again, is just a general Skanel development approach. As far as best-in-class, I mean, we really do try hard to set and should give a product that looks good. I mean, of course, that's subjective, right? Some industrial buildings, most would say, never look good. But as far as relative speaking, we do generally tend to have more glass as well as higher-end landscaping, concrete walls, et cetera. One thing I want to point out here is just the partnership aspect. You know, I am... I'm not from local, and I'll admit that. We do rely very heavily on local consultants, local counsel. And the point there is being, is we know this is a partnership. We can't do anything without this group right here approving and being on our team. And we don't want to go where we're not wanted. And so we're here to hopefully present to you something that's appealing to you, that you can support. I'll skip that, just again, talks about myself and Jack Kelly and our boss that we report to. With that, I think I'll turn it over to Glenn, who'll get into more of the technical details. Again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. As the... For the record, my name's Glenn Harvey with McFarland Johnson. I'm the project manager for this project. Kind of go through some of the nuts and bolts of this. And Jennifer gave a description of the site, but to kind of see it graphically, we can see the proposed building here. Route 9 is across the top of the screen, so we've got the access coming in on... From the right side of this image. Here we have the employee parking along the top part of the building, and then the trailer parking and trailer storage along the bottom part of the building. You can also see the stormwater management facilities that we're proposing on this site. The site with the stormwater infrastructure that we're proposing, it will be compliant with all DEC stormwater regulations. The utilities for this site, so the water, gas, and electric are going to come from existing mains on the US Route 9 frontage. And the septic treatment for this site will be in a septic system field located in this image to the left of the building or between the north end of the building and 87 in the area there. We did, as Jennifer mentioned, we prepared a very comprehensive environmental assessment report. I'm not going to go through all of that right now. I think maybe I see one of the binders on the table there. There's a lot of information in that report. We put that together to try to give you a head start on how this site should... Could be evaluated in regard to SEACR and the completion of the EAF. Just a couple of things we wanted to highlight and go over again. It was mentioned that there are a fair amount of wetlands on this property. The building does sit outside or does not... The building in the parking area does not impact any of the wetlands or the buffer areas. There are some minor encroachments into the buffer area for the installation of some utilities, primarily the force main to get the sanitary up to the septic, proposed septic field. Also, as previously mentioned, that the entire site is located within the flood plain. The proposed plan brings the finished floor actually four feet above the flood plain elevation. And that's to meet also the requirement the lowest adjacent grade has to be at or above the flood plain elevation. The loading docks along the bottom of the building in this location, it's four-feet elevation difference between the finished floor and the loading, the pavement elevation. So that's why it needs to be four feet above. So there'll be enough fill brought in to bring that development out of the flood plain. It was also mentioned that we have previously submitted the traffic impact study that's included in the EAR to the DOT. That traffic impact study, currently the proposed mitigation in that, we anticipate a signal at that, the existing driveway connection, as well as a right into the site, and then a dedicated right out and left out onto US Route 9 from the site driveway. Couple of things in the EAR that I wanted to point out. We did have, under the plants and animals, impacts to plants and animals, we did have a wildlife biologist visit the site, and it was determined that the site does not contain conducive environments for the Indiana bat, northern long-eared bat, and bog turtles. So that was considered in our review. And it was also mentioned, just to expand the indication from SHIPO, that the site... There's no impacts to properties, including archaeological and/or historical resources that would be impacted by this project. So that's the project view at a high level. Are there any questions?
I'll ask the board if there are any questions at this point.
When you said you're going to have another traffic light?
Yes, so the current traffic impact study proposes a traffic light at the... That southern driveway and US Route 9.
Well, what about the light we have already for all its... The project is in front of it.
So we took...
We also have a light going down, too.
Correct. We took that traffic, that traffic report that was prepared for that site and included that in our traffic, our traffic assessment.
Okay, so it's not going to be a second. It's going to be same light?
No, it is a second light. Their traffic impact study, they're not utilizing that southern driveway. So their traffic improvements are located at the signal north of ours. So they're completely independent.
Yes.
Gotcha.
And to follow up on that, so there's... With the previous warehouse that we reviewed and approved, there was already going to be a southbound right turn lane into the site. And so that's going to become part of your project, I understand now?
Yes.
So I'm just... I don't know. I mean, at this point, it's difficult for any of us to know, but the, kind of the timing and coordination between the two different projects, I mean, both very large warehouse facilities. One's approved, yours is just coming in now. DOT, obviously, is playing a very important role in the review of both of them or has already started their review. Just curious, I mean, have you had any discussions with the owners of Duchess Mall about what the status of that first warehouse project construction is? Because we don't hear very much about it ourselves. And also even, I mean, you might not have a direct answer to this part of the question, but have you actually had discussions with the Duchess Mall owners about possibly actually taking over that site that was approved and building there? Just curious.
I'll let Daniel or Jack respond to that.
Daniel Mader of Skanel. We have engaged multiple times. We actually have interest in pursuing both. We would like to do... We feel very confident in the overall market, and we would build both. We've attempted to contact them, and they don't... They, as of now, don't seem very open to wanting to. I know they are engaged with a previous partner that I think was with them in front of you previously. So, but we have been engaged, and we have attempted to pursue as well. But to date, it has not been fruitful. They are clearly told us to sit back, and they're engaged with their previous partner. So we do believe it's slowly going forward with time. We're prepared to go forward with or without, and we're not dependent upon them. But again, we would be interested in that site as well, if given the opportunity.
Okay, thanks. Well, I had a few questions and observations. One, again, we've already talked about the fact that this is a very large-scale development proposal with flood plain wetlands and the possibility of downstream flooding. So, you know, I think looking ahead to the, to our review, we'll be interested in looking carefully at all those things. But I think the issue of downstream flooding is going to be an important one. So we'll be interested in seeing how, you know, reviews on that play out. You know, again, with the cumulative developments on the Duchess Mall property and this, now the Fishkill Golf Course, which is a, you know, a nice open space property, I should disclose that I am a golfer, and I have played on the Fishkill Golf Course.
So have I.
And, you know, many of us probably have been there, too, because it used to have a fairly well-functioning restaurant or several over the years. So it's an interesting site, but probably quite challenging. But another, you know, possible thing to look at is the visual impacts of this additional large-scale facility on the Hudson Highland State Park. And you already mentioned and are familiar with the Route 9 gateway that's in the town's conference of plan. So those will be important questions. Also, the town actually adopted a fairly new tree preservation law in our town code. And so although, you know, it's a golf course, there are quite a few interesting and large mature trees on the site. So I think we'll be looking at, you know, which trees are going to be cleared and removed and which ones might be able to be preserved, and what type of tree preservation plan we might be looking at for this site. And then also the landscaping plan. I took a quick look at it, and I think, you know, we have a ways to go before we get into too much detail on that. But it looked a little bit minimal for this larger facility. So, I mean, we'll have more comments on that later. But that's just something I was noticing. It looks like we're going to need to enhance that landscaping plan. That's kind of all I had for now. Other questions from board members?
None at this point.
Not a question, but a concern. I mean, you had mentioned, many of us have been there. The groundwater, I suspect, is very high, even in the area where they're building. So the concern being with the stormwater and the onsite septic. I believe there was some explanation in the package that was presented about selecting certain types of practices that would be respectful of, you know, the high groundwater. So that would be a big concern of mine as well. Obviously, the, you know, the flood plain being right there and the whole site being within the flood plain. So I don't think we need to get too deep into it tonight, but my initial thoughts kind of went there as well as I was looking at this application.
Any questions for now over on that end?
Do you have any possible people who are interested in it? Like, do you have a... Any company looking?
Any?
Like Amazon?
Interested in the site?
What entity are you looking to try to put in there?
We do not currently. Due to our reputation, we generally will not take a site to our Fortune 500 or to our clients in general until we get a good sense that we can do what we want to do. And so we certainly will be taking the site to them in the near term as we work with you guys. But to date, we have not... We have not, and we do not have a tenant lined up currently, which is common for us at this stage.
Okay. My only concern, and I'm going to be straightforward, is that corridor is going to look very industrial to me. There's going to be that warehouse in the front, and there's going to be our warehouse. Within eyesight, I can see Walmart, which is ginormous. And on the other side, The Gap, which is really big. So I can't imagine who's going to be going there. We have a lot, like, I'm not sure. And Fishkill is not like Orange County where there's a lot of open space. So you put up a, you know, 250-million-square-foot warehouse, it looks minuscule. When I see an aerial shot of The Gap, it looks humongous.
It is, right.
I know. That's the point I'm making. I know.
Yeah, well, that one's over a million square feet, I think.
Yes.
Yep.
So I'm just kind of, you know, putting in my head, what is it going to look like when we're driving down?
And by the way, throughout this process, it's common for us, at least I wouldn't be able to do the whole area, but we could actually give you like a rendering video of driving down and what it would look like. I mean, we have that capability now.
That's awesome.
So at least on to the mall side, we could do that as we go through this process. I'd commit to that, which may be helpful.
Yeah, it probably would be. Because when you look at something one-dimensional on a piece of paper, it looks all well and good. And then when you see it, you go, whoa. All of a sudden, it's not flat. It's really huge, or it's really massive. And so I'm trying to put that into...
Perspective.
Yeah, I really am. I'm trying to do all the homework that needs to be done so that I can make decisions that are beneficial to not only what you're trying to do, but the preservation of our community. And it's challenging. So, you know, I appreciate any information you can give me. I appreciate, really, I do. Thank you.
Will the entire building be given to just one client? Or you might have multiple clients?
In this-sized building, we would... How we come into something like this, if it's speculative, and really how we've been successful as we have, is we build it to be as flexible as possible. And so we'll come into this planning for one tenant up to... I mean, we really could handle up to three tenants in here, but we anticipate one to two tenants. But we'd be prepared to have up to three tenants based on demand.
I know this hasn't been referred yet to our consultants, but just wondering, Sarah, whether you have any questions at this point?
I do not. Thank you, Chair.
Or John?
Yeah, I, I have just a couple minor ones. You, you mentioned you'll be pursuing septic for wastewater treatment, which is understandable based on probable water usage. But I, I didn't hear what you're planning to do for water supply. Is it going to be a, you're going to develop wells back there, or are you going to look to connect to?
We're going to connect to the existing village.
Village system, okay.
Yes.
And then the other, you talked about the endangered species, and I'm, I'm pretty certain the other warehouse project, the timber rattlesnake came up as a hit because of its proximity to the, the mountain. They did a study and determined there was no habitat for it. But I, I just was curious if that was a hit on, on your environment.
It was.
Okay.
And, and we did that same assessment and determined that there was.
Okay, great. That's, that's all I have for now.
And Liz, I know you haven't had a chance to really even look at this, but if, if you have any questions.
Well, I did kind of go crazy looking at the mapping, but I have a feeling these folks have already found a lot of these items. So, one is the Clove Creek, which is a, runs right along, I think it's the western side of the site, and it's, it's classification is C in CTS, which is trap spawning. So I'm assuming that would show up in your habitat study. You know, there's federal wetlands, New York State wetlands. There is some local wetland regulations with the town. Jennifer's nodding. And then, let's see. And then, I'm sure Principal Aquifer, Primary Aquifer showed up, and I wasn't sure whether you were aware that the town hasn't adopted aquifer overlay. Okay, so you've got that already. And then, so there'll be some kind of habitat assessment. I assume it'll cover trees, oak tulip tree forest, Appalachian oak hickory forest, and red cedar rocky summit. I'm looking over to see if her head is moving.
Yes.
And as John mentioned, the timber rattlesnake. And there is a critical environmental area, which I'm pretty sure I've looked up before, and that has to do with the aquifer.
Yeah.
And that was from '92. So, that's all I could find.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions from board members for tonight?
No.
All right. What I'd like to do is see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make informal comments regarding this proposal. Please raise your hand if there is anyone who would like to. I see one person. All right. Why don't you come up, and we'll give you four minutes to comment to the board, and we'll give you a heads up when, one minute's left. And again, please give us your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Ann Legoy. I live in the town. I have to give my specific address? I don't want anybody showing off my house.
No, you don't have to.
I'm in the town.
Welcome.
So, thank you. I, I actually didn't bring my copy of the comprehensive plan, but I really appreciate that that was brought up here. There are several concerns, you know, the, the vision of the town with the new comprehensive plan update was, of course, to respect the visual impact of entering the town of Fishkill. You know, this is a sizable project that will be very visible. It, of course, will have impact on all of those other things that were of concern to the almost 300 people that filled out a survey as part of that comprehensive plan. So I think that, you know, given some of the concerns that Ms. Axelson gave, this really needs a very hard look, especially in conjunction with a very large warehouse that is going to be within spitting distance of this one. So, you know, we don't want an industrialized town. That was one of the main concerns. Anyone can look at the survey. This information is available on the town website under the comprehensive plan update. Some of you were on that committee. So I, I would hope that you would look back at that comprehensive plan and really help, have it serve as your guide to what is expected and desired, and the vision that people have for the town when considering this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Yeah, one, one thing I was going to mention, just to pick up on the comment about the comprehensive plan update, I was one of those on the committee, and Fred also was on that committee. But there's, there was a large parcel analysis done in conjunction with the comprehensive plan update, and this was one of the sites, the Fishkill Golf Course. And I know you did include some information on that in your environmental report. But one thing that I think wasn't mentioned, and that I just wanted to bring up, and again, this, you know, the site is owned planned industrial, PI, but the comprehensive plan actually did suggest the possibility of the town board looking at that site in particular, but among others in the town, large parcels that had significant development potential, and looking at current zoning and possibilities of other zoning that might be appropriate. It still is owned planned industrial, so, but it is something that the comprehensive plan, you know, did talk about, and I certainly appreciate Ann's comments and concerns.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just add, we did obviously review the comprehensive plan, you know, prior to making our submission, and we're aware of the discussion of this site in the comprehensive plan. And, you know, we read that as, that recommendation regarding the possible, you know, revisit of zoning, to really be targeted at preserving the natural resources of the site, particularly the, the wetlands. And that's why we brought up the fact that the, the building is sited the way that it is, and the project is designed the way that it is to, to preserve those wetlands and, and their buffer areas as, as much as possible. So we feel that we've taken that into consideration with respect to, to what's stated in the comprehensive plan. Plus, I think, I think 500,000 square feet was sort of the, the max build-out project, projection for this, and obviously, we're, we're not proposing anything near that. So I, I wanted to make sure the board was aware that we, we did look at the comprehensive plan and tried to design the project to be consistent with, with what was stated in there.
So I think, among other things you'll, you'll hear probably mentioned by the board as the review process goes through, is, you know, the size of the facility, the amount of parking, especially because of the floodplain and drainage considerations. Planning board always prefers to see less parking rather than more, so anything that can be done to address that and minimize the amount of parking is always good. I know you're, you're already looking into that, but, you know, we'll have further discussions about that.
Great.
So, the other thing, in the agenda description, we're talking about referring this application to a number of parties. One that wasn't mentioned, but I wanted to ask the board for your input, is whether we should refer this application to Liz Axelson at CPL, so that we can get her expert advice throughout this process. So if the board thinks that's a good idea, we'll add that to a result, a, a motion that I'll ask for in a second. All right.
Second?
Not yet.
So, well, why don't we, why don't we, would you like to make a motion?
Somebody want a second?
Very anxious.
Okay, me. I'm seconding it.
This would be a motion, I'll just fill in the blanks with a motion.
Okay.
A motion to accept the application for the proposed Fishkill Commerce Center at 387 Route 9. That's the site we're talking about, right?
Yes. Yes.
And to refer this application to the town engineer, town planner, town planning board attorney, Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, New York State Department of Transportation, and Rambout Fire District for review and comment. So I think Jody moved that.
She's seconding, I'll move if she can second.
No, she moved it. You seconded it.
No, I can't hear real good.
Would you like to second it, Felix?
Okay, sure.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Well, thank you very much for filling us in on this proposal. We'll have a much more complete discussion at the August 8th meeting. And we'll talk a little bit more about the secret classification and process at that meeting as well.
We appreciate your time. We also wanted to make one more request. We, we wanted to ask for permission to confer with your consultants that you just referred the application to.
Well, I think it would be premature probably at this point, until it's actually referred to them, and they have a chance to look through the material. So we could, we could do that at the August meeting.
At the next meeting.
Yeah, if that's all right.
Understood.
Okay. All right.
Great. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming. Actually, why don't we take a very short break, because I need a short break myself. So five minutes?
Yes.
So we'll, we'll resume at 9:05. Thanks, everybody. So we'll turn off the broadcast for five minutes.
No, I don't want to come in.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think we're ready to start back up. So the next project review is 698 Route 52 and 712 Route 52 Lot Line Realignment. Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on June 26, 2024, a draft resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval, and to consider its adoption. And so the applicant has submitted a revised plat and additional information as per CPL's comments at the board's discussion at the June meeting. Would you like to make any comments, or do you have any questions? You've seen the draft resolution, right?
Yeah, everything looks good.
Okay. And I'll ask John Bodendorf, do you have any comments on the revised submission?
No, we had a conversation with the applicant's engineer after the last meeting. We clarified our question about the non-conformities. It turns out there weren't any. So that comment went away. They corrected the typo. And the only other outstanding item was to submit deeds for the, the new lots in a form that's acceptable to the town attorney. That is already included in the draft resolution, so we didn't feel there was any reason to submit a, a new comment letter. All of our other concerns were addressed, so we're good.
All right. Good. Well, let me ask, I know this is putting you on the spot, Sarah, but Dominic prepared a very nice resolution for the board to consider. If you would be so kind as to just very briefly run us through the basics of it?
You know what?
Or do you have the copy of it in front of you?
I don't know that I brought one. And that is my fault, Chair, because Dominic did instruct me to do that.
I'll give you mine, Sarah. No problem. When will I get it back?
I was going to give you mine too, but, so, I mean, it's a pretty basic resolution. And these kinds of applications are meant to be kind of expedited reviews. So this one is kind of simpler than a lot of other subdivision rate resolutions that we get.
Okay, so it's a resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval for 698 Route 52 and 712 Route 52 Lot Line Realignment, whereas an application for a lot line realignment approval was submitted to the planning board of the town of Fishkill as more for, as more fully detailed as follows.
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
Typically with these, Dominic will skip a lot of that initial stuff and go right to the conditions?
Sure. So I, I was going to do the title and then go to the whereas clauses?
Okay, there you go.
Is that okay?
That's absolutely fine.
So we'll jump down? Whereas the properties, where do you want me to go?
I would.
My instructions were unclear.
I would go right to where?
Be resolved?
Yeah. Therefore, be it resolved.
Okay. Expedited review. The planning board of the town of Fishkill hereby grants both preliminary and conditional final lot line realignment approval, and hereby authorizes the chairman's signature on the final plat subject to prior satisfaction of the following conditions. One, that the owner's consent block shall be signed and dated by the owners following the last date of revision. Two, the surveyor's certification shall be signed and sealed by the appropriate licensed professional. And three, that the final subdivision plat submitted for the planning board chair's signature shall include a planning board approval block as shown at the bottom of the page.
And then there's the four and five deal with the deeds that John Bodendorf had mentioned earlier regarding the new lots.
Do you want me to read both of those?
No, I don't think we need to have them all read.
Yes, and then it's just a straightforward deed of conveyance for the sole purpose of unifying into a single lap the two parcels as previously described, and be it further resolved in accordance with Town Law 267-7C, conditional approval, final, excuse that, conditional approval of the final plat shall expire within 180 days after the resolution granting such approval unless all requirements stated in such resolution have been certified and completed. Any requests for an extension of the resolution can be submitted as described in Section 2. The signed plat must be filed with the Dutchess County Clerk within 62 days of that signing. The approval of any plat not so filed shall expire 62 days from the date of signing as provided in Town Law 276. The applicant shall submit two copies of the subdivision plat showing the endorsement of the clerk and a USB drive or CD containing a copy of the subdivision plat with the county clerk endorsement for the planning board secretary, rather, to the planning board secretary within 30 days of the data filing.
Okay. The only thing I noticed was that in my version of the draft, the headers need to be corrected, because this sometimes happens with these drafts. So we'll just correct the headings. Any questions or comments from board members?
No.
All right. Or does that look, does that look good to you, John?
It does, yes.
Okay. All right. And you've had a chance to look at it, Bill, and it looks all right?
Looks good.
Okay. So I'll ask for a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval for the 698 Route 52 and 712 Route 52 Lot Line Realignment as reviewed and revised tonight, and to authorize the chair to sign it. Fred moves that. Is there a second?
Second.
Jody seconds it. Any further?
Notice I said it in improper.
Yes, for the proper order.
Correct.
For this one.
Yes, for this one.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks for coming. All right, so.
Good night, board. I'm going to excuse myself for the last two items, because Liz has got it completely covered.
All right. We'll, we'll give you a call if that doesn't turn out to be the case.
Absolutely.
Bye, John.
Absolutely. Good night.
Thanks, John. All right, so, we are back to Homeland Towers Communications Tower, Route 73 Route 9, Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. So, I guess we left off after the public hearing, which is still open as of now, but David is just going to ask you at this point whether you have any further things you wanted to discuss about the new submission that we got. And then, we can just go on to discuss some of the other things that we were talking about.
Sure, as I stated in the public hearing portion of the meeting, our last submission in the last meeting that we met with this Board, the focus of the discussion was alternative designs for the facility. I think we had reviewed that the two-tone monopole was probably the preferred design, but you still wanted to see what a flagpole or flagless flagpole would look like. We did present photo simulations and updated the visual resource analysis to include that. Again, it would be a much taller facility because they have to vertically stack the antennas instead of keeping them all at the same rate, same size, same height. And then, we also went through and submitted from our RF engineers, you know, several negative aspects that come with this design from a technical standpoint. It is a worse design from a technical standpoint. And we'd just like to highlight that while it may reduce somewhat of a visual profile, it's arguable if that would actually be negated by having a need for a second tower if there's no room for co-location for a third or a fourth carrier. We'd like to hear from the Board what its opinions are of the design options that we presented.
John, I have a question.
Go ahead, Fred.
When you said the colors are going to be brown on the bottom and sky blue or some other color, is that also on the array itself? Will the array also be that color?
Correct, we can color the antennas. Usually, what we do is the top half is usually almost a light gray or white color, and that's generally the color that the antennas come in anyway. But if a different color was chosen, one of the design options we offered was, instead of doing a two-tone, we just paint the entire thing brown. In that case, we wouldn't paint the antennas, we would wrap them in a concealment film that would be a brown to color it, just the way that the technology works, you can't put the paint on it, but we would, in a sense, color the antennas brown. So, if that was a direction from this Board, we can absolutely color the antennas.
Yeah, thanks Fred, I was going to ask that same kind of question.
You want to ask? Okay, sorry.
No, no, I've got others I can ask.
Go ahead. Well, I got another one, but that has to do with the gentleman who talked earlier about the vibration.
Oh, well, why don't you go ahead?
I'm really curious about vibration.
Sure.
What he's talking about.
So, I think what he's stating is that the use behind us, right, is they're going to have some seismic. One of the things that they have to do as part of whenever they do the blasting is they have a requirement to not damage the existing uses that are on our property. So, they put seismic graphs around and they have a level of, basically, a level of vibration that they can't exceed. But again, we wouldn't design a tower to fall down, so we would absolutely take that into account in the engineering of the foundation. We'd also still would do geotechnical studies to really confirm exactly what the best foundation is for this facility. We're also building as part of our area is a retaining wall to help shore up the ground in that area. So, this is something that we'll take into account, but it's really more of an engineering question. And it's not one that we haven't seen before, where sometimes we're near heavy industrial uses with just these types of facilities. So, it's just something that we'll have to take into account when designing the foundation.
Okay, because you have two up there, both.
Absolutely.
Because I know that people who live near Trap Rock know at 12 o'clock, everything's going to vibrate. And that's something Kipsey, so...
Absolutely, that's something we'll have to take into account in the design, but that's really more of an engineering question, not so much of a sighting question.
And he also mentioned something about...
The propane deliveries?
That trucks entering the facility, I mean, that we'll have to go around this pole or something.
Sure, so, we spoke with the gentleman outside, I think what his comment was, was that one of these two buildings is his workshop and that they have propane deliveries to those. So, again, we have a lease from the same landlord he has, so that's something that we would have to work out with the site organization. But we don't really have much room that we're taking up, so I do believe that there would still be the ability to have the deliveries, but we can work with the landlord if we need to provide an additional space for, we can try to work that out. There is enough room from the tower to there, it's really just we have our fenced-in compound here.
And I have another question.
Sure.
You probably mentioned this last month, but I don't remember. You said the flag, the flagpole, if you go with that, the width will be 44 inches.
Correct.
So, what will be the width for a monopole?
So, the monopole is tapered, so at the bottom of the pole, it's probably about similar, about 44 inches, but it tapers as it comes up, so it's about two feet wide at the top of the pole. So, it'd almost be twice as large or twice as wide.
At the top.
Yeah, exactly. Because with the flagless flagpole, we don't have the ability to taper, just because we're trying to fit within... So, the way the flagpole works is you have the base of it and then, within the part that's going to actually have the antennas, they still have to have a pole that attaches all the antennas on, and then, they have concealment canisters that go around it. But it's a uniform, straight height, there's no ability to really taper that unless you're talking about getting even wider at the bottom, which we don't need from a structural standpoint.
And you say the flagpole will be taller?
Correct, the flagpole is going to be approximately with our simulations, 180 feet. The reason for that is because the antennas right now for our current design, they're all at the same elevation height, so they can put, Verizon can put nine antennas, 12 antennas, even 16 antennas at one site at one height. When you go into the flagpole, there's less room as horizontal space, so now, you have to vertically stack the antennas. So, whereas you had 150 feet height for all nine antennas at the same height, now, we've got to fit those antennas and vertically stack them. So, that just increases the height.
Yeah, I actually took a pretty close look at the VCOM memo that was submitted on the flagpole issues, and I thought they did a really good job of demonstrating the issues associated with the flagpole type structure. I mean, there are trade-offs, obviously, with a flagpole type with a flag or not. It's going to result in its own other kinds of visual impacts and provides less opportunity for other carriers to locate on it, as you had mentioned. And, you know, so, we very well could end up with another proposal for another pole somewhere else.
Exactly.
So, I mean, I think in my own mind, that kind of convinced me that whichever site this ends up going on, probably the monopole design with... And I was pretty impressed with the illustrations in the visual assessment report with the two-tone color option of the shadow beige on the lower portion and the pale gray on the top, because it kind of reflects how you're looking at it and what you're seeing as a background to it. So, at the higher up you get, you know, the pale gray takes over, and if the antennas at the top are, you know, of a similar color to that, then I think it helps to blend it in with the sky and the background better.
That's absolutely our goal. Just the one thing we would note with this particular design, depending on your vantage point and where you're looking at it, where the ridge is in the background and where the sky breaks is different from certain vantage points. So, like, from this one, which is looking right down the driveway, it might be a little higher. So, if the Board wants to go with this design, we would just ask that they direct us for which vantage point they want us to try to match the ridgeline with best, because obviously, it's really going to be one viewpoint where it's going to be most closely matching to exactly where the ridgeline ends. Some other points, it may be close, but may not be exact.
I just have a question. I took a ride around and I went from here to Albany and back, and I took pictures of cell phone towers, so I am now way more familiar with what I'd be looking at. There is one that appears to be, and the only way I can describe it, it looks kind of like ladders and it's four-sided.
It's called a lattice tower.
Okay.
They have one actually right on 84 by Lime Kilton Road, I think there's like a public DPW yard over there.
DOT.
The DOT yard.
At the base, how wide are those? Are those the same, like four feet or are they much wider?
Much wider. So, just the design of, you know, from an engineering standpoint, you now have four posts interconnected with crossing, call them rods, so it's just a little bit of a wider design.
But you can see through it much easier, I think, and it's not as, it's not, I mean, I have, I think I have a picture of a monopole and it has, I think, I counted, four or five, and it's significantly above the trees and it's pretty darn obvious. And, you know, at some point, I can show everybody, I was going to try to print it out, but I'm not real good with my phone, I'm not technical. You guys laugh, but I'm not. But I'll be happy to show anybody, including you, and if you tell me it's a monopole, then to me, that looks really obvious. Like, I'm looking at this picture here and I'm saying, yeah, it doesn't look, I can hardly see it, but those things aren't on it, all the antennas aren't on it, and it's, you know, it's going to be two feet wide, but is it really? It's probably going to be six or eight feet wide once you put those things on it, right? They're going to become much...
Sure.
And so, my point is with that lattice one, I thought that was less obvious. And I have comparison pictures for myself, I'm like, because I literally went all the way to Albany and back down because you can get really good views, and I just, you know...
That's absolutely something we can explore more, I can speak with Homeland Towers to see if that's a design that would work here. We usually don't promote lattice towers, usually because some people think that they're actually more visually intrusive because they're a little wider.
In this particular photo, it didn't look to me.
It really depends on which site, so you can have a monopole in some areas that looks horribly out of sight just based on where it's located, and then, you have them in some other areas where you don't even notice it.
Agreed.
Everything is a site by site, but if that's a design option the Board would want us to look more into, that's something I can discuss with my client, is just whether or not that would be feasible from an engineering standpoint for where our particular site is located in the space that we have, but I'll double check on that if that's something the Board would like for us to look at.
That's true, the base of it would be quite a bit wider because of the form of a lattice tower, and my understanding is lattice towers are usually for much higher towers.
Exactly, usually lattice towers are more built for the radio towers that are like 300 feet tall, or they're used for like high transmission power lines, you usually see those types of designs. We've built lattice towers before, that's not something that we're opposed to, I just have to check with my client to see if it actually would work here feasibly with the space that we have.
I'm just saying, I saw it and to me, when I saw it, and there is a photo of a lattice, it appears to be a lattice tower next to a monopole, and I don't know if they're moving one from another, or I don't know what they're doing, maybe they're two totally unrelated things. I'll show you the photos, you'll be able to probably identify what's going on.
I hope so.
To me, I looked and I said, oh, my goodness, you can hardly notice that one, it's like, you know, a lot of open area, you can hardly notice it. And then, the other one was like, whoa, you could tell, I mean, it just was right there.
Again, with the lattice towers too, it's usually, you think of a lattice tower that you can see through it, with these types of equipment, we still have to run the cables up the lattice tower, so what quite often happens is you'll have a black cable that goes right up through the lattice tower, and most people feel that that kind of takes away any of the see-through effect.
These were pretty significantly far away from me, I mean, I wasn't right along.
Sure.
And it was in a very wooded area because up there, it's the same terrain as down here, it's not like open.
I'd recommend you take a look at the one that's on I-84 near here, Lime Kilton Road, they have the black cables that go right up through it. Again, it's not a design we're opposed to, I just have to make sure if it's something that could actually be feasible for this particular site. But yeah, I think the monopole also provides a little different options as far as the mounting ability. Sometimes with the lattice towers, there is a restriction in mounting, just the way that the tower is, but we can look into that if that's something the Board would like us to look into further.
Thinking of that DOT, how far is your site from DOT site, how do you know?
I have to confirm.
Because I just thought of that.
Like, half a mile, probably.
Oh, it's probably a little bit further than half a mile, it's probably closer to one or two.
Miles away?
Yeah, because again, this is further north than what we're looking at, and those sites were, again, they were included in our RF justification maps. We showed you the existing towers that's in Village of Fishkill and the other two towers that are near 84.
That would be where that cut off.
So, that's something that, like, we have taken into account as part of the existing...
As an alternative site, because from 84 to the, what used to be called Molly's Crouch, which is where the firehouses, Fishkill Road going into Cold Spring and the Cut-off, that's five miles.
Right, again, it also depends on topography in the area, so one of the reasons why we're located where we're located is we're in the valley that goes along Route 9, so we don't have the ability to, you know, it's a line-of-sight technology, so once it hits the ridge, it can't go any further. So, we're exactly in the area that has the gap in service that we're trying to fill, and the RF justification reports did document that those existing sites wouldn't be able to be powered up or have additional antennas added to them that would extend the coverage into this area. But I can, you know, at the next meeting, provide you additional information on that.
But, and, Ms. Axelson was saying that one of the alternative sites was actually higher, correct?
Correct.
So, and I just have a question for the attorney, if I can ask you a question.
Sure.
He has, the applicant has to do due diligence with trying to facilitate finding alternative sites. That would be proof of the letter going out. But, he said that the letter went out, the first letter went out in 2017 and then, a second letter went out in January of '24, am I correct?
Correct.
Wouldn't, does that, that big time gap, does that facilitate trying now that he's trying to move forward? Is that enough to say, okay, he tried in January, good, that's good enough? Or would it be, let's try twice because maybe it changed ownership?
Well, that's something that the Board could suggest, but I feel like the gentleman clarified that he sent them then, he did a follow-up, that he's gotten the responses, and that the no responses were turned over to the Planning Board to demonstrate that they did make a diligent effort. The town code doesn't specify a quantity or a number, it's going to depend on what's available and the, I'm sure, like, the gap in coverage, right?
Absolutely.
Like, where, there's only specific areas where it's going to be useful to have them.
So, just to correct the record real quick, so, we sent out the second set of letters, but we didn't receive responses, that was what we're determining as the no, because we haven't received a response to our 2017 request and then, again, in January of 2024. But, when we try to find these sites, it's not just a couple of months, Klaus has been looking for, you know, almost a decade for this particular area, so that's how we get to this point, is we have to find one that's leasable and available to us, particularly the Knoll Road site or the Knoll site that's been discussed. We can take a look at it again, but we already sent letters to this property owner, and he was a property owner that owns multiple properties that we sent letters to, and we got no responses on any of them. In addition, we can look at it a little bit further, but that Knoll area is going to be higher in elevation, so if it's higher in elevation, it's going to be more prominent and more visible. It's also in an area that's heavily wooded and forested, so we're going to have to cut a lot of trees down over there. And the area that I believe is in question is right around here, there's the Clove Creek right there. So, we also have the issue of we're going to be now in closer proximity to a waterway and a water course that we don't have access to, so we'd have to also get a new curb cut along Route 9 and get a DOT approval. There's a lot more impacts that come with this site. I think the reason why it's been discussed is because it's a little bit further away from Carroll Lane, but again, it's not a site that is less intrusive by any objective means. We'd have to do more site work for that site to work. We'd also have to, as I stated earlier, we have to take into account the environmental impacts to the Clove Creek, and at the end of the day, it's not one that's available to us.
Well... Well, one of the, one of the things that kind of stuck out to me, just to me, and maybe I misheard. If I misheard, please correct me. When you were saying when a person's driving, they're gonna be driving by these three industrial properties and then they're gonna see this. But it's not the people who are driving by that are gonna be the only ones that see this. Those homeowners have to see it every day. And so if there is any remote possibility that what, that they're gonna be viewing could potentially be moved maybe out of their field of vision or maybe a little bit obscured more, should be looked at. They, they have to live there. They have to look at it every single day. And I think it's gonna be a bigger impact than what we all sitting here are thinking. Because we're all looking at that pole with nothing on it. There is nothing on it. It just shows a pole and we're like, oh, that, that doesn't look that bad. And even to me, it doesn't look that bad. Till you start sticking those things on it that are going to be, you know, however, how many feet out are they gonna be at the top? I don't know. It's not gonna be two feet. It's gonna be ten feet, eight feet, maybe more. I don't know.
Let me just interject that, that, something that I think we wanted to discuss also is, and it was in the scenic Hudson report. And I think also mentioned in, in CPL's memo of adding to the simulation drawings of the monopole, the full number of array, of antenna arrays that would be visible from those, those several viewing locations where it would be, you know, most prominent. So I, I think that actually would be a good idea to give the public and the board a better feeling. And it's kind of clear that some of us probably don't fully get what the full antenna arrays on the poles would look like.
I'd have to kind of object because again, that's not part of our application. While we are providing co-location space for these different entities, I don't know what their equipment is. So we'd be speculating at what would be put on there. We're also speculating if they would even put anything on the tower. So why we were showing just the one carrier on is because that's what this application is intending to build. As an added benefit, we're providing co-location space. But I'd be guessing at the size of the antennas, the type of the antennas, the number of antennas, or even if the carrier would want to put antennas on the, on the pole. So while we're providing the co-location space, if you want, we can present it. But we'd have to highly classify that or put it into context that that's not our application. That that's a speculative end build.
I think, I think from a seeker standpoint though, it would make sense to do it that way because, and we, in fact, we had a very similar proposal on Route nine D where the same exact issue came up where there, this was, what was the name of that again on?
Tarpon.
Tarpon Towers, yeah. Which was also a Verizon facility up at the Country Club on Route nine D. And their first shot at the visual assessment had just the one array at the top like, like your group is showing. And we asked them to go back and revise the simulations to show the full array that could be possible based on the, you know, design and engineering of the tower. And so they went back and did that. And it really showed a different look from some of the sites that it was visible from. So I think from a seeker standpoint, seeker likes us to look at, you know, long-term phases of developments where although this, the other arrays may not be Verizon's, this tower would be providing the opportunity for that to happen. So I think it would be fine to do it, to show them and to have, you know, whatever disclaimers would be, you know, would make the applicant comfortable. But nonetheless, I think it's, it's a good idea to, to show the, that full range of arrays that could be on there. And I mean, they would, you know, it's probably fairly similar to other towers where this has happened, where you could probably make some pretty good judgments of what the other arrays would look like.
It just, it would, I, I understand the point. It just would be pure speculation and it would be giving you, you know, simulations of stuff that we're not intending to build. Any future carrier that comes onto the tower would have to go through its own, you know, approval process and file an application with the town. I, I can discuss with my client. I'm not, I'm not gonna object tonight to it wholly, but I, I do wanna point out that, that you're asking me to kind of make up what could happen without any solid reasoning of whether or not it will happen.
Liz, I'll ask you because you were involved in that Tarpon Towers review. What did we, what was involved with having them?
Without, let me, let me just, I wanna walk through, you know, what you're asking and what Mr. Kenny is saying because each side of the picture has a conundrum. So when the town wrote their law, you know, one of the caveats that's built in there is to be able to have fewer towers with more carriers on them. Because then we have fewer of these things in the landscape. If the board really believe that a tower is only gonna have one set of antennas, and if that's what's happening here, then they have to be thinking, well, where are the other towers gonna go for the other people that aren't gonna go on this tower? So wait, 'cause, 'cause it's, and what Mr. Cantor's asking for is a simulation with whatever caveats you want. But the board really, and correct me if I'm wrong here, the onus on them when they're doing their seeker review is to fully consider the impacts. You're applying for one antenna array, but with room for co-locators. And so that is a possibility. So if, if the board has to redo that seeker thing over several steps without looking at the whole picture at once, it's kind of like a long-term segmented look at the visual impact. And there is absolutely no reason why, just like every other cell tower I've reviewed, that as many co-locators, be it, you know, the top one with two or three, I don't think that's unreasonable to ask for. And then of course, you know, whoever is providing the simulations can put whatever footnotes they need, you know? But the board really needs to see that to be able to evaluate the full long-term impact. And also to consider, if this is only gonna have one array, does that mean we're gonna have more towers all over the place? Kind of thwarts the whole point of co-locating and having few towers in the first place. So there's conundrums on both sides, but I don't believe it's unreasonable for the board to ask you for that simulation.
Well, and, and one of the, as you mentioned, the other things and of many in our law and the code is that another applicant would have to first look at the possibilities of co-locating on existing towers. So if there's one tower sitting practically bare with just one set of antennas, that's the obvious place if it's gonna serve their needs for coverage to go to. So it's likely that that's gonna happen. It's not just speculation. It's, it's a likelihood that that would happen.
Well, yes, absolutely. We're building the space for it because we hope that that'll happen. My point is just that the application before you is for Verizon and Homeland's tower. And I think you're mixing a couple of issues here. One is, is the reducing of the proliferation of, of towers is why we're adding the co-location space. However, you're asking not for the review for the purposes of reducing the proliferation of towers. You're asking for reviewing the visibility of the project I'm presenting to you. And the project I'm presenting to you is just for Verizon and Homeland Towers. My comment is, is that I don't know if, if I show you four carriers, what if four carriers are never built on the tower? And that's the reason why you guys are, are finding that it's not, it's, it's visually obstructive. It's because of that fourth carrier. I, it's, it's, you're asking me to speculate on what their equipment is and whether or not they're actually gonna build it and whether it's gonna be a full build out. I, I mean, again, I'll go back to my client. We'll probably provide that to you at the next meeting, but.
I would, I would urge you to do that.
I do have to highlight though, you're asking me to guess at what another carrier's gonna put up. And you're asking to review information that's not part of my application.
Correct. But I think there's enough common experience of other towers where this exact same thing happens, where you could get a pretty good idea of what types of arrays would be going on it.
Which is why we did show it in the drawings to show what it would look like. I'm just talking about, the visual resource analysis is very specific to what is going to be presented by our application. And our application doesn't include these co-locators. Those co-locators would have to provide their own application, whatever channels it goes through and be reviewed. Again, I understand the request. I'll discuss with my client.
Which under our code are generally more expedited reviews if it's, if everything else has met the standards of the code. So it wouldn't necessarily get into as big a seeker review as this might be.
Correct. It may actually go.
So that's the answer. That's the answer to the question.
Well, no, because the, the answer is.
Don't say no. That is, that's the answer from the board's perspective to the question.
I, I'm not trying to argue over something that I'll probably provide, but I do have to highlight that you're asking me to, to give you.
I'd suggest the way to do it to make it even clearer that, so to keep the simulation views that you've already shown in the visual assessment report. And then on a separate page, show with the possibility of, you know, the full arrays, you know, like on the next page or next to it in a box that says, here's our proposal. Here's what it could look like with the full co-locators.
Okay. I, I, I'll talk to my client and see if we can provide something for you. It's just. Yep. Going right there, just so it's on the screen.
What we're looking for is a simulation of having four arrays. Now, if somebody's gonna come to you, can they put up a green array?
Excuse me, what?
Would they, somebody else who's coming in after you, AT&amp;T, wanna put up a green array? Would that be okay?
So if, if you guys choose a color design like we're doing now, that would be a stealth design requirement. So they could propose a green one, but then the town would be able to review it. To comply with federal law to go through the streamlined approval process that the chairman was discussing, they could not do that. They would have to keep with the same stealth design.
But can we see, like that pole there, putting four arrays on it?
As the, as the chairman requested, I'll, I'll discuss.
Because I'm not even sure that's the one you're gonna put up.
I'm sorry?
The one that you're showing me at the right here? Is that definitely the size that you're putting up at that pole?
Correct. So that's why we were able to do these simulations is because we have the specifications and we know what Verizon's going to install. And that's really my only hesitation here is because I have no idea what AT&amp;T, T-Mobile or Dish is gonna put.
They'll have to come to somebody else to put up their array. They'll have to go back to us or somebody else.
They'll, they'll absolutely have to file with the town. Well.
Yeah, that would be up to the planning board under, under our code, which allows us to review it.
We'll provide it. This isn't a hill to die on. This, we'll provide it.
So, we would much appreciate it if that could be provided.
Can I ask?
Yes, please.
Regarding the same, the pole designer, I don't know, many of us must have seen this cell tower on, going south on Hutchinson River Parkway.
Oh, yeah.
That looks like a tree.
Fake tree.
Oh, the Frankenpine? Yeah, the Frankenpine, everybody calls it, yeah.
That, that looks almost like a tree from actually. Unless you get, get very close, you don't know that it is a cell.
Except it doesn't.
Some people say it looks more like a toilet brush than a tree. But yeah, the monopine is absolutely an option for this board if, if you would want us to explore that further. I think we discussed it at previous meetings.
Why, do you think it's a good idea to look at it?
That might have less objection from the people.
I see it all the time.
I don't think so. I think it would probably be more conspicuous actually.
Yeah, usually you don't see a hundred and fifty-foot tall redwoods in this area, but.
Yeah, this, again, this, I don't, I don't wanna characterize it entirely as an industrial area, but because of the industrial types of uses, you tend not to have even clumps of large pine trees or spruce trees that would, that a, you know, simulated evergreen tower would blend in with.
I know, I know, that, that particular tower is surrounded by trees, so it's okay, yeah, I guess there.
And even, that's one reason why the example of the Hutchinson River Parkway one is terrible because there aren't a lot of trees around it. And this thing just sticks up. It just sticks up way, way above anything that's near it.
The history of that one was there's some wealthy homeowners in New Rochelle and in Scarsdale that they could see the top of it and that's how that got built. But it doesn't work if you're driving along the Hutchinson River Parkway. It looks like anything but a tree.
That's funny.
Oh, one, one thing I wanted to make sure I mentioned, last meeting I had mentioned a correction needed in the site plan sheet C three, which shows the enlarged site plan. And the proposed signage on the gate had a inaccurately labeled detail to refer to. It showed it as section, C section, C two slash C five for detail. But that detail is actually on sheet C six. So it's gotta be corrected to C two slash C six. That had not been.
It wasn't corrected in the most recent one?
Yeah, it wasn't.
We'll get that updated. I'm sorry about that.
That's all right. Yeah, were you gonna say something?
I just wanted to say one thing, just for the people on Carol Lane, just talking about seeing it through. Maybe if we can try to see, is there any way for you to be able to mitigate that view from them? Is there anything that, and I'm not sure. I would have to go out there and take a look from that vantage point. But something that we might, if, if it stays in that spot, you know, that's, that would be a, something that I would like to see if we can somehow mitigate that. Because who wants to see that every day?
So.
If possible. So just something I want you to look at.
We can take a look at it, absolutely. I, off the top of my head, I'm not sure. But here are some of the views from Carol Lane. Again, we took these photos during leaf-off conditions. There's no direct views from Carol Lane. There's only views through trees. So it's hopeful that if you were looking at it today, it'd be less visible. But it, it, again, it's a line of sight technology. I have to have the antennas above the treetops to actually get the service there. But we'll absolutely look to see if there's anything that we can come up with to help mitigate or reduce any visibility of the tower.
Yeah, that would be great if it could be done.
Usually the best option is try to get that color right. That seems to be less noticeable, but we'll, I'll take, I'll take another look at the drawing board and see if there's anything else we can come up with.
And lastly, I wanted to say, I agree with you, John, on the, on the type of pole. Because I'd rather have one with the four, you know, than having two poles in different places. So as best we can, I'd rather have it as a monopole rather than a flagpole, you know, so. And I appreciate the, all the input that you guys gave on that.
What I'd like to do is ask Liz to go through CPL's memo from July second and just kind of highlight some of the things that we haven't, either that we haven't already talked about or things that you wanna emphasize in things that we did talk about.
Okay. So I had, wait a minute, I have some very specific questions about the coloring. One thing I do wanna point out to the board that my comments, five and six are meant to kind of put back on the record what are some of the resources. So they're repeat comments, but they're in there for a reason. Some of the resources and what that area is all about. So I'm over on page four of seven. And I'm also suggesting that the board kind of focus on, there are sort of twelve views in figure C seven through C eighteen. And I'm hoping that in particular, those views that are more, I think in your face, they're the clearest ones where you can see the different, that especially those, if we can see the four antennas, four antenna arrays on each of those, you know, as another, another image, however your team wants to do that. But those, those are key views where it's quite visible. And the one thing I think of, that stop sign right there, I think that's the end of Carol Lane.
Exactly. That's why I've been focusing on that because we heard from the public, we wanted to focus the different alternatives on where it's probably the most likely the direct visibility from them.
Yeah, yeah.
Although again, this is at the end of Carol Lane where there's not an actual house. This, yeah, the way Carol Lane is a little interesting because it is a residential zoning district, but all along. zoning district, but all along Route nine is just general business and planned industry. So this particular intersection may actually be in the non-residential zoning district.
Oh, yeah. Oh, it, it very possibly, it very possibly is. You know, I, I think what the sensitivity for the residents on Carol Lane is that, you know, maybe they're walking there, maybe it's just pulling out, you know, that kind of thing, one of those daily things.
I think the other important photos, just to interject, to look at, are C 13, which is at the monument, the Battery Monument.
Yep.
And then the actual site entrance, which shows, you know, the most close-up view of the tower.
Yep. Well, that's why I kind of went for that whole series.
Yeah, that whole series.
I kept going back from C seven through C, C 18. I went back and forth through those a few times. And that's the one, see, there's no wires there. Anyway, let's see.
And again, with the monopole, there wouldn't be wires on the outside, because we, we put the wires inside the actual pole.
No, I meant, the, you know, you're talking about the utility lines along the road, and this is one of those views where you don't happen to have that, because the lines kind of cross to the other side of the road. So that, that's what I was mentioning. So I had a couple of questions. This is comment seven C in figure C 13 at the Battery Monument. It's showing a galvanized pole, I think. Galvanized steel pole option is noted.
Correct.
In other similar illustrations. I don't think it was labeled there, but I, I guess that's what it was. And then you've mentioned how the antennas, whatever they're covered with. So item D is the galvanized steel option may be acceptable. The color and finish of the antennas is unclear. And in some of the figures, C 13 and C 15, they look kind of shiny and reflective and blurry. So I don't know if that's just the way the image was created, or the angle of the antennas, but if that's something you guys can either explain away or adjust.
Can you tell me where you see any kind of shine? I mean, they're white antennas.
In other words, you're seeing the pole, and it's kind of grayish, and then when you look up to the antennas, there's kind of, there's more of a brightness up there.
Well, it's, it's a different color. So they're white. And so the pole's gray. So it looks lighter, but they're not going to have any kind of metallic finish or anything that's going to create a glare or a shine or anything like that.
Well, I, I mean, I'm wondering if maybe it would be good to have, if they're white, is it possible to make them like a soft gray or something like that? Just a thought.
Sure. I mean, that's absolutely, I think, from what I'm hearing from the board, the more preferred design than a straight galvanized pole is probably the two-tone color. So we'll probably, if, if that's going to be the one that's chosen, whatever color the top half of the pole is, we'll seek to match the antennas to that color.
Right.
And we can do a matte finish or anything like that.
That was the other thing I was trying to, you know, play around with the language a little bit to see. And that's why a matte finish, I don't know, also, would that work on the antennas?
So generally, they're just plastic, but.
Okay.
So they come colored white. But if we have to color them, again, we don't usually paint them. We do a concealment film. But yeah, we can choose a more matte tone finish that.
That's, yeah, that's what I think, because I think white seems to stand out more, or at least from that image. And again, I'm going to defer to the board. I'm just trying to make some observations to help.
And again, the, the reason the white kind of works is, again, usually we're going to do almost so close to that white color for the top half to blend, blend in with the sky. But absolutely, if there's a different color chosen, we can color the antennas that color.
Yeah.
And the mounting brackets and all of that.
Yeah, I did notice when you go back and forth and look at the different images with the white, it looks different depending on the backdrop of the sky. So for example, there with the clouds, you know, when there's clouds, it, it kind of blends in a little bit. We had one image where it really stood out, maybe you just happened to have blue sky behind it. See there, those, yeah.
Maybe Liz, if it snows, it'll disappear.
I was just going to say that.
If it snows.
No, you won't even see it.
If it snows.
Well, generally, pretty blue skies are the best type days, but.
Right.
For most parts of the year in the northeast, it's kind of light gray kind of sky color, which is why the galvanized steel or a light color we usually use to blend in.
Yep. Let's see. And then the brown painted option, and that was for one with antennas. So, and it looks like that's a matte finish. And then my, I guess, further down, item seven G, the one thing I wondered about, if it's painted brown and it's going to fade over time, what kind of color would it turn into? Would it just be a faded brown? Some browns turn reddish, that kind of thing. So that is really just a question. I don't know.
So if that's chosen, that's something that we could add as a condition of approval, basically maintaining the color.
Okay.
If we want to go through brown. Forget off the top of my head, but generally, these types of facilities come with a, a special permit renewal type process. So usually that comes up at that time, or when the next co-locator comes on, and where they're doing a modification for Verizon's equipment, usually at that point in time, someone takes a look and see if there's anything existing at the facility that needs to be maintained or updated. So we can take care of it at any of those times.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful.
Yeah, I wasn't that fond of the brown, plain brown color anyway.
Whichever the color is, we'll, we'll maintain.
And I'm gathering that, I, you know, listening to what the board is saying about the different things, I, I didn't get a feeling of a lot of love for the internal antenna pole. Okay, that's very helpful. And then I had one question and clarification on that. The 180-foot tower with the antenna array inside, is that just one set of antennas in the 180 feet? Or is that three or four sets of antennas inside the pole?
Like three or four sets for Verizon?
No. In other words.
Co-locator.
Yeah, co-locators.
So basically.
Thank you.
So basically Verizon's going to take up almost from 150 to 180.
Okay.
So that leaves the space below. But with the other tower, based on our knowledge, because of their having to vertically stack their antennas and how low they can go, that will likely only save room for one other carrier.
Gotcha.
Its potential, maybe two could fit, but that, in our experience, never happens. So that's why we're saying that with this type of design, that third and fourth carrier is left out in the cold, and they probably have to build their own tower.
Okay, okay.
That is a limitation with the flag.
Exactly. So, and, and there's also, Verizon's found equipment that can fit in and work. Other carriers have different frequencies and different antennas for those frequencies. They may not even be able to co-locate, even if they can fit, because of the type of technology and their need for their coverage. So they're, like Verizon's giving up some coverage by trying to make that design work. Another carrier may not be able to sacrifice that coverage.
But as a monopole, it doesn't have those restrictions.
Exactly. That's why it's the preferred technology, because you can put more antennas at the same elevation. We can put the RRHs up at the same elevation instead of putting them at the ground. And then also, it's the azimuth, so like the actual direction of the antennas. We have more ability to down tilt them, so you can focus it right at Route nine, or you can, you know, change the direction a little bit, so you can focus it more north or more east. And with the, the unipole or the flagless flagpole, it's just a space limitation, so they can't actually tilt it, and they can't actually sometimes get it in the direction that they want.
I just want to go back to page two. So I tried to make some more substantive commentary and comments for A through, um, A through G, really. I was trying to really point out, these, these are the big hitters. And one of the things I think it's important to know, and so I put this from the bottom of page two to the top of page three, the extent of the impact. I understand that the road is 55 miles per hour, but it is a curvy road. People do slow down. And I know most people are buzzing through. I know what it's like. Everybody's always tailgating me, because I have the unmitigated audacity to go the speed limit. So, but there are places along there, and there are people that really do ride along roads, and if they can slow down, we'll take a look at the scenery. And it is pretty striking scenery in that hollow. So what I was trying to say to you is that the, that the United States Route nine route has an AADT of 18,340 vehicle trips per day at the project site, which came right from the visual resource assessment that was submitted by the applicant. And so I just took that and I said, you know, if it's 365 days a year, that's 6.6 million viewers per year. Some of them have got to be looking at the landscape. The other thing that I want to go back to, the Battery Monument is something that's very important to the community. It's, you have a ship-o letter, which, thank you, didn't matter when it came in, just to have that piece of paper was very helpful. So you have the state historic preservation office sign off. The hmdb.org site is something that a lot of people, some boomers, some older, some younger, if they're traveling through an area, will look up to see what historic markers are around, and they will deliberately drive, take a scenic route, just to see those things. So they, they may not be recognized by the state agency, but they still do have some importance. And if you look at the website, you'll see there are markers all over the United States in that database. Those are the big ones, and then otherwise, there were a couple of scenic cuts and points that I thought were worth emphasizing, but it's getting late, so I don't know.
Well, no, it's not too late. That's important, so why don't you do that?
Okay, okay.
Can I just make one comment on, on the CPL memo before we move on? The, the comments you have in four, A through G, are very similar to what were in the last memo. And there really isn't any incompleteness being noted. It's just, I guess, this is your take on the application. So I just wanted to clear, there, there really isn't anything for us to respond to here. It's, it's, this is Liz's opinion on, on the application. So I'm not, I'm not exactly sure if there's a request on us to, to do anything to address this. I think we discussed this at length at the last meeting. I mean, I'm open to hear, if you would like us to do anything, we can. I just, we, I think we, we keep going around in circles on these few issues.
I think it's fair. I'm, I'm trying to keep that on the record and expand upon it for, you know.
I just want to make clear I don't have homework. That's all. I just want to make sure I don't have any homework.
It's fine.
Well, and that matters for the shot clock too, right? If it was incomplete, wouldn't then the time start to, wouldn't it toll?
No, that's not how the shot clock works. So they had at the beginning in their first filing to deem the application complete or incomplete, and that already occurred. So the application was already deemed complete, and at that time, we agreed to toll the shot clock. So we even gave an additional period. But I don't want the board to worry about the shot clock. If we get to the, to the August 8th meeting and there's a need to further extend, and it's, you know, reasonably progressing, we'll absolutely extend the shot clock. We're not trying to force you into decision here. We're trying to make sure that we have the right decision.
So Anthony, remember that, okay?
Yeah.
There you go.
It's on tape.
And, and I acknowledge, it really, comments four through, I think, six are all about making observations and having those on the record. And, and I don't think anything in those is asking.
No, I know. I just, I just wanted to make clear, just.
It's fine.
I don't have any homework. That's all.
It's fine.
Actually, I'd say, especially with the Battery Monument, I know there are some references to it in the visual assessment report, but that really is something important from the local municipal level. And I think if there's some wording you could add, enhance on that particular one, because it is actually referenced on the town's adopted, what is the map called that goes with?
Historic Resources Map. And it's actually the battery and the three batteries.
Yes, right. And so I think it probably, from a seeker standpoint, we're not talking about completion of the application, but completion from a seeker standpoint, it would probably help to flesh things out if there's a little bit more description of that Battery Monument site as a local, locally significant resource. I know there's some, something in it, in the report, but I think it could be enhanced a little bit.
I'll speak with my client, see if we can do. We, we do respect it, which is why we made sure we took a photo directly in front of it.
Yeah.
So picture tells a thousand words, so to speak.
Yeah, absolutely. And that is one of the more prominent views of the, of the monopole from that site.
It is, but again, we, we do note that we do have the ship-o concurrence, and then also, it's been discussed in the report and at the prior meetings. Currently, this area doesn't have any turnoff lanes or any parking areas. And so the, the actual use of it or for, you know, visitors is somewhat limited. And I would again state that if you see the tower, it's actually to the right. So for most people, when they're looking directly at the monument and looking at the ridge in the background, the tower's going to be off to the right. And also off to the right even closer is an above-ground utility pole. So I, I think we've documented the visibility from this site, and respectfully, I would submit that we aren't, we aren't negatively impacting this site. It still can be used to see the monument, and there's still a clear visibility of the ridge in the background.
Yeah, it's just the interruption of the view that, and I think that's pointed out in the scenic Hudson letter as well, which I agree with totally. It's not blocking the view, but it's affecting the view from a locally significant resource.
Respectfully, again, if you, if you position yourself looking directly at the monument straight, again, this is, this camera's focused at where the balloon was. It's almost like diagonally to that. So if you were looking directly at the monument, this would be more to the right of your profile. The ridge is still directly in front of you when you're at the monument. So, yeah, I'm, I'm going to admit you can see it, but I just don't think it deters from the ability to visit and enjoy the monument.
I'm just saying it would be prudent to, and, and expand on that description a little bit.
We'll do so.
You can.
We'll do so.
Take that for whatever it's worth. Liz, any, there were some other points in the scenic Hudson letter.
Yeah, I'll, I'll touch on a few points in the scenic cuts and letter, July 8, 2024.
And then David, you had mentioned that there were some points you wanted to refute or, or talk about. So after Liz does that.
Sure, absolutely.
Why don't you do that?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I guess I'm, I'm hoping, I don't know if we can get a response letter? Does the board want a response letter?
We will be providing a, in written response to this, absolutely.
Okay, great. So I'm just going to touch on a few resources. They talk about on page one, the scenic area of statewide significance, and scenic Hudson conserving 1,100 acres on Fishkill Ridge, which is now owned by New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation, or New York State OPRHP. And he speaks about the proposed tower substantially, quote, "break the ridge line of the state park in SASS when viewed from Route nine." Breaking the ridge line violates an important objective of protecting visual.
Resources.
Visual resources, sorry. I had to turn the page. And then there's an acknowledgement of adverse impact on aesthetic resources of local importance. Again, we've discussed the Battery Monument as roadside historic marker, commemorative plaque, American flag, and three batteries guarding the gorge of the mountains, also another monument. And they acknowledge it doesn't offer parking, but it is very visible from Route nine, and it's, which Route nine is also for bicyclists. I've pulled off to the side. It may not be perfect, but you definitely can pull off. Is that me causing that?
No.
No, it's the speaker.
Okay. He talks about it being a stopping off point for cyclists. And then further down on page two, scenic Hudson is talking about that whether or not there's a diminishment of the resource. And at the bottom of the fourth paragraph, scenic Hudson would urge the planning board to determine whether a 150-foot sighting and design would diminish the public's enjoyment and/or appreciation of the Battery Monument, and not rely on the conclusion of the applicant's visual resource assessment. And then he acknowledges in, in depth, the gateway corridor from the comprehensive plan update, defining, welcoming visitors, defining Fishkill as a quality community. Paragraph talks about preserving and enhancing the existing rural community and scenic character of Route nine D and Route nine, and the town and country feel of the community. And he goes over that it starts from the gateway from the south, from Phillips Town, and goes north to the Duchess Mall site, and acknowledges that the facility would be cited within a prominently visible part of this designated gateway. And then he talks a lot about the forested ridge line as a backdrop from Route nine. Of course. ridge line as a backdrop from Route 9. Of course, anybody that's driving up and down the road is going to see that. Um, let's see. And then he's kind of going over, uh, commentary at meetings. Um, on page four, the photo simulations and the visual resource assessment depict a proposed tower with just one set of arrays. We've had that discussion tonight. And so that, that really needs to be addressed. Um, and again, acknowledging the logic of co-locating to minimize the number of towers. Um, let's see. And then I'm, I'm skipping right over, um, to page five, and it talks about alternate sites. And this, this is one of the reasons why I went back through the history, remembered that early in the process, I acknowledged that alternative sites had been investigated. And I didn't go any further with it. But when I saw them talking about this, I thought, well, let me just take a look at the mapping and see what I can see. And that's when, you know, I sort of pinpointed, um, parcel 683590. And basically, if you're, if you're looking at the opposite parcel and the curve in the road, there is a knoll. It is on the roadside. It's not, you don't have to cross the stream to use this knoll area. There are a couple of chunks that are right on the roadside where you would never have to cross the stream to find a tower site from my limited standpoint. So, so, I mean, only because when you look at the little, you know, shelf of land you're working with anyway, that kind of sets a new precedent for, well, if you can find a site there, if you can go back, go north a little bit and go back a little bit, it looks like there's kind of a shelf where you could run a road around and get to a high point. So anyway, I, I really think that should be examined. Um, Jonathan, those are my main points. Did I miss anything you wanted me to discuss?
No, I think that's good. I think we want to talk, again, pick up on the alternative sites, um, discussion that we had during the, um, right after the public hearing. But first, um, David, if you have any specific things you wanted to mention about the scenic Hudson letter that you thought were, you know, a little bit off or not well-founded?
Um, so again, one of the, the views I guess was discussed with the view from the Hudson Highland State Park. We did include a photo of that. That's, that's up here. Um, again, you look across the quarry to see ours and it's over 5,300 feet away. So it's, it's at this view and at this distance and this change of elevation, it's going to be almost near impossible to discern that you're seeing a cell tower at that view. Sure, some people could see it, but I don't think that at this distance and at this view, it's really a significant impact. Um, regarding the aesthetics of, of local importance, um, you know, I, we, we did provide the, uh, we did provide the photos from the Battery Monument, um, but we do have the SHPO concurrence. Um, and, you know, for, for that standpoint, uh, we just wanted to highlight that, you know, SHPO does kind of control in that, in that particular area from a statewide significant importance. Um, as far as the gateway corridor, I mean, I think that's been one of the focuses of this application. And while we do appreciate, um, the importance of the gateway corridor, I think we, we have documented that, um, although the gateway corridor goes all the way from the border of Phillips Town all the way to the former Duchess Mall site, the tower's not visible through that entire stretch of Route 9. It's just a very limited portion along that stretch of Route 9 where you have documented visibility. And where those views are occurring are actually next to industrial uses, which again, we're in a, a general business zoning district for a zoning code that was only adopted, I believe, two or three years ago, would allow 185-foot tower here. So with 150-foot tower, I think we have taken into account, um, the gateway corridor. And again, I think the gateway corridor is a, um, a goal for, for the town to develop as such. Our services that we could provide from the tower would be indiscriminate to anybody, um, trying to develop along that area, whether it be a hiker, a campground, residential homes. Um, you know, anybody that's trying to develop or any developments they're trying to go along here, our, our facility would help. Um, just a couple other small things. Um, I, I guess they're attributing to me, um, that I stated to the board that we should all just get used to say, uh, seeing cell towers. I don't think that's exactly what I stated. I think I said more along the lines of, as the technology has become more prevalent, people have become more used to seeing cell towers. In fact, I think one of the reasons, and we've already kind of gone off it a little bit, why the monopole might be better than that flagless flagpole. A lot of people might see that flagless flagpole and then they stare at it trying to figure out what it is. Whereas a cell tower, you kind of already used to what it is and you see it and you just move on. Um, the, the only thing regarding the photo simulations, we discussed it tonight, I just, the characterization of it being misleading, I, I just take issue with that. We are providing photo simulations of what our application's proposing, but we have had the discussions tonight. We'll provide the full build-out photo simulations. Um, and regarding the, the visual impact conclusion, I mean, that is what our conclusion is, but absolutely, this board is the one that's in charge with determining whether or not, from a seeker standpoint and from a, a special permit standpoint, what our visual impact is. Um, we did provide alternative designs, so that was reviewed. And again, regarding the alternative sites, I, I mean, we had this discussion earlier. Those are all properties we are previously reviewed, we have previously looked at, um, and we sent letters to, and we sent letters to, again, at the request of this board. We still don't have any notice from any of those property owners that the property is available to us. Um, we can look more into the area that Liz discussed, but again, looking into an area that we don't have any lease rights for or any ability to negotiate a lease for, it, it's kind of a fruitless task. I would also point out that even if we don't have to cross Clove Creek, we're getting closer to it. And again, there's still the issue of it's a heavily forested area. So now we're going to have to take down probably several hundred trees to enter in an access drive and build the site. And then there's also the need for a new curb cut on, on Route 9. So a lot of those things would make it actually a more impactful site when our current site is fully developed. So we have no tree removal for our current site. Um, and it's an already developed area. So we're going in an area that's probably with the least environmental impact. Um, and that's really the only points I wanted to touch on.
So get back to the alternative sites in a second. On, on page five of the scenic Hudson letter, just above the alternative site section, um, scenic Hudson suggests that the planning board hire at the applicant's expense an RF engineer to review the plans and alternatives to verify the applicant's designs and specs are the minimum necessary to meet coverage, Verizon's needs. The planning board did that. So I just wanted to make sure on the public record that, um, the planning board did hire an RF consultant, Doug Fishman, and, uh, he basically came to those conclusions that scenic Hudson is suggesting that one come to. So, so let's, let's talk and wrap this up with the alternative sites.
Can I just, I'm sorry, there was one little thing. One of the things that scenic Hudson said is that, um, he quoted the visual resource assessment, saying the proposed tower would substantially, quote, "break the ridge line of the state park and SAS when viewed from Route 9." Breaking the ridge line violates that. And they're saying it's viewed from Route 9, just, just to be clear. So, so the board understands that the impact is from Route 9, not, not like the image that we were looking at before. That's it.
Liz, what page is that on?
That's on the first page, right at the bottom. So we were looking at an image as if you're up in the mountains. And I understand why you showed that, but they're kind of talking about the view that most people are going to see that aren't up in the mountains. So that's all. Minor point.
So, alternative sites, um, further technical evaluation of, in particular, that parcel 683590 would be much appreciated if you could provide the board with some additional, you know, basic overall evaluation of that. And that parcel actually has a number of parts of it that could be appropriate for a tower to locate. And some of them, some of those locations, I think, would get around some of the things you were mentioning. Like there are parts of it that have existing access to Route 9.
Yeah.
And, um, probably also in already disturbed areas that wouldn't require a lot of tree removal and things like that. So.
That is why we originally went to them.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I know. And it's so, it may not be as far north, farther away from, from the residential area as the residents we're talking about, but it still would be farther away. And it might still provide some actually good opportunities and benefits for the location.
Well, it would actually be closer. So the area that you're, you're thinking of, so the area that actually has access would be down here. So it, it would be closer to the Battery Monument and it'd be like right across the street from Carol Lane.
No.
No, no, that, not the area that you were just discussing. I'm talking about the area that, that they previously looked into to try to get into this area. There was a thought of going over here because of the ability to access and already cleared.
But that's not what we're talking about.
I, again, but the area that you're talking about is the area that we don't have any access drive. But we'll review, we'll, we'll review and we'll get some information.
Right, right. Yeah. And, you know, at the same time, it, it certainly would be appreciated if you could perhaps go back to that particular parcel owner who now owns the whole composite of, um, the, you know, what is now that tax parcel number. And, you know, just maybe make another attempt to see if, um, there might be any interest in pursuing it, if it turns out to look like it may technically be, you know, a go.
We'll absolutely review it. And if it seems to be feasible, that, that would be prudent. Ultimately, we want a tower in a location that'll work and will be approved. So if, if that's the direction, we'll look into it. It's just, I just want to make a point that the merger happened prior to our January letter. So when we did send them the letters, they had already merged and they merged into a, an entity that we had sent letters to, you know, several times before.
Yeah. So I'm just wondering, is there any way besides, you know, in addition to sending another letter, it says somehow other, some other way of trying to reach out to, you know, the current owner so that, I mean, maybe they're just not, maybe it's like they get a lot of mail and they throw a lot of it out and they just don't want to be bothered. But, um, you know, if they're aware this is something actively before the town, then maybe they might reconsider it.
We'll review the, the, the site and see if, if it'll work with, um, but again, the, the reason for the, the certified mailings is, is if we had a phone call and we're like, yeah, we had a phone call and they told us no, and you guys are going to immediately ask, well, how do you document that? How do you prove it? That's why we go with the letter out.
Yep.
Right.
I get it.
Oh, understood. So, um, well, a couple of things we should do. Um, one is, um, well, here's an easy one, I think. So, um, this action was already classified as an enlisted action. We sent the lead agency notice of intent out. The time period expired on, I believe, June 22nd for, um, involved agencies to respond. We didn't get any negative responses. So, um, the board really needs to declare itself as lead agency. So I'd like to get a motion from the board for the town official planning board to declare itself as lead agency to conduct a, a coordinated environmental review of the Homeland Towers proposal pursuant to seeker. Would somebody move that?
Some will.
Felix moves it. Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that carries. So, um, the next thing we have to decide on is whether to keep the public hearing open or, um, and continue it at the August 8th meeting or close the public hearing tonight. Um, after all the discussions we've had and, um, you know, some of the materials that you kindly indicated that you would get to the board, um, and because of the kinds of comments we received at the public hearing, my own personal opinion is it would probably be a good idea to keep the hearing open until August 8th and see, you know, see what the materials look like that we get. Um, and, you know, just give another opportunity. We didn't have a throng of people here for the hearing, but, um, I know there were several people who, um, weren't able to come and maybe they would be able to come and make comments. So my suggestion, um, subject to, um, input from Sarah, our attorney for the night, um, if that sounds like a good idea, would that be a, in your mind, a good thing to do?
That's what I would recommend. So yes.
Okay. Is the board okay with that? Leaving the public hearing open for another month, basically, which then will lead to the other question of, and again, the shot clock, but let's decide on the public hearing. Um, does it, let's put it this way. Does anyone see a reason not to keep the hearing open until August 8th?
If the board felt like they were in a position to close it, I, I, I would support that. But I think in light of what's going on, there's no harm in allowing for additional input. But honestly, I, I could probably go the other way too, if that was the way the board felt, to be completely honest.
Yeah. I mean, I don't see any harm in keeping it open.
Okay. BJ?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, let me ask then for a motion to keep the public hearing on Homeland Towers open and continue the hearing at the August 8th, 2024 meeting. Would somebody move that?
Somebody move it. I'll move it.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Robbie seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So we'll leave the public hearing open until August 8th, um, as close to 7:00 PM as possible. I don't think we sent any other public hearings for that date. Okay. All right. So again, just getting back to the, um, the shot clock idea. I mean, is that, I'll ask, you know, you as the applicant, representative and the board. Um, it's obviously going to take, um, past the targeted expiration date of somewhere, what it was at August 18th or?
August 19th.
19th. Um, so should we, um, you know, enter an agreement to extend that tonight or should we wait till August 8th meeting and do it then?
Um, I think if you wait to the August 8th meeting, you may be in a better position to know how much further you need to extend it. But if you absolutely want me to extend it another month now, I'm happy to do that, whatever the board would like. Again, we said at the beginning, we, we don't want the shot clock to force you into decision. It's something we have to deal with because it's a matter of federal law, but, um, it's up to the board, whichever you would prefer.
Sarah, do you have any thoughts on that?
Not personally. I know that Dominic did speak to counselor about the shot clock and that I think that the conversation was, everybody was comfortable addressing it at the August 8th meeting.
Yep.
As long as things are progressing.
But again, I, I acknowledge that even if we get to the August 8th meeting and it goes swimmingly well, um, there's likely going to be a need for another meeting after that, even if it's for an adoption of a decision. So we, I'll state on the record now that we expect at the August 8th to discuss an extension of the shot clock and we can define exactly how long we're extending it at that meeting.
I'd probably say probably more likely two months at that point for the seeker determination and, uh, you know, um, at least a preliminary resolution of approval, if not preliminary and final. But that's likely to take probably two months after the August 8th meeting, I would think.
Completely expected.
So as long as everyone understands that, and I won't be here at the August 8th meeting, but, um, just so the, the board and on the record, we understand that we're going to bring that up again at the August 8th meeting. Does that sound okay, Liz, to you?
I was just going to say, in the interest of trying to look down the road, I did provide the board a visual EAF addendum. And if you want, for the purposes of discussion at the next meeting, I could do a full EAF part two, if you'd like me to draft that.
What does the board think about that? I think, um, I think with the additional information we're going to be getting on August 8th, it might be better to wait until we get the material and then take a shot at the EAF.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I was looking at it in the way of, we get the submittal. The board's looking at it. I'm looking at it. I'm going to be writing a new review. And that- board's looking at it, I'm looking at it, I'm going to be writing a new review, and that was what I was thinking, it was for the same reason I gave you this, just to start thinking about it, and so that's what I was thinking, is it would be after that submittal.
I mean, I see no harm in you starting to look at it, but I think
You don't want it, okay.
I think having a draft, yeah, yeah.
It's early, okay.
Part two would be a little premature.
Okay.
Until we see the, you know, the full picture of the information that we're going to have collected by.
We need more information, yeah.
So, I think at the August 8th meeting, the board could request you to prepare the EAF part two and three, and, you know, if, even possibly, depending how things go, to at the same meeting, ask, I guess Dominic will be back by then, but ask our attorney to prepare a draft resolution possibly for the September meeting as well, so then, if that all happened, then, you know, maybe we'd only need a one month or so extension of the shot clock, but we could decide that on August 8th.
Absolutely, and just a question, so we're in front of the zoning board as well, would the board take a seeker determination and then require us to obtain the variances before you issued your site plan and special permit approval, or?
Yeah, is that your understanding, David?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so, we'll definitely take two or three months.
So, I'll see you through the day, but then again.
So, there is that, there will be that, that little
Becoming friends.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, with the additional ZBA action, there may be like another timeframe that needs to be adjusted.
Exactly, so, and again, if we extend it on, at the August 8th meeting for only two or three months and it looks like, oh, we needed actually four, we'll absolutely extend it again, again, our point is to deal with the shot clock so we don't run afoul of a statute of limitations issue, but we're not trying to force this board into a decision.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, well, sorry that ended up in such a long discussion, but I think it was valuable and worthwhile doing it, and
Cell tower applications never go fast.
Correct.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right, so we have one more item. And amazingly, I think, I think this last item could be fairly quick.
Could be.
I think so.
I need just a moment to put my
Let's see, welcome, while I'm rearranging my stuff, I'll just read the agenda item, this will be the Fish Gill Self-Storage 1292 Route 9D Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit, Board to Review the Revised Draft Environmental Impact Statement submitted by the applicant's representative on June 26, 2024, and to make a determination whether to accept the DEIS as adequate with respect to its scope and content for the purpose of commencing public review. Welcome, Mr. Werner, good to see you again.
Hello.
I was just going to ask you to give a very, the quickest synopsis of what went into the revisions of what we currently have in front of us.
Yeah, so, just to recap, we submitted on June 26th a revised DEIS that was, provisions were in track changes, so they were easily found in the document, we also submitted a, within the comments that were part of the scoping document showing the incomplete findings, we responded to each one of those in a different color, it was red for the comments, and we responded in blue, and each one of those kind of takes you through the document to see where you can find the edits, so I felt that was a helpful way to, for you to review it, we did get the CPL memo and the draft resolution, and we have no objection to what it's saying about determining the DEIS complete for public review, and I'm here to answer questions, and otherwise, I think we're ready to move forward.
Good, I'll just turn it over to Liz briefly to tell us about your memo and your review, now, we've talked about it, but just to fill the board in as a whole.
And also to let the board know that Aaron and I did have offline consultation, which I found very helpful, remember that when we determined the DEIS to be incomplete, there was an annotated scoping outline, so the comments that I had were in red, and then Aaron submitted just specific sections, mostly the land use sections, with his responses in blue, and I looked at them, and then we had a Microsoft Teams call and went over them together, and those are kind of the core areas of impact, and from what I had reviewed, they looked, those particular sections looked complete, and so from there, the rest of the DEIS was put together with responses to all the other incompleteness issues. So I think that that was a very helpful way of doing things, to, you know, go back and forth, I hope it helped the board, and I went through everything carefully again, and it's ready for adequacy or completeness, and that means that I've kind of said, well, I've looked at this, I have information here that basically covers, you know, a response to what we asked for, what the board asked for in the scoping document, but that's just to say, is it adequate or complete, and that sets in motion, once the board says that it's okay to do that, that will set in motion review for substantive comments, which is, do I agree or not, so if I was reviewing the text and going, well, I don't, I don't agree with that, but whatever was put together by Aaron in the DEIS covered the bases, that's complete, and now's the time for everybody to look and think about, do you agree with that statement or that paragraph or whatever, and that's substantive, I hope I've explained that correctly, okay.
And that would run until September 23rd, with, based on the resolution that you've got, the comment period.
Yep, yep, initially, I started drafting it for August 8th, and I was like, what am I thinking? So, yeah, I think it's appropriate for agencies, and particularly the board, to have the time that they really do need to look through this, if there are certain areas they want to focus on.
And the resolution, you'll talk about that in a minute, but also covers the holding of a public hearing, which would be, at this point, tentatively scheduled for September 12th, right? That's what the resolution says.
Yep, and the comment period goes to September 23rd, which kind of
Yeah, and that all fits within the timeframes that seeker sets forth, right?
It does, the actual, when I was counting it out, it would have ended on a Sunday, so I bumped it to the next day, which is a Monday.
Oh, we could meet on a Sunday.
What?
What about liberty of the holiday, is that going to include it?
Well, I think we're talking about calendar days.
Oh, calendar days, that's what I'm asking.
Yep, it is, yep, yep.
Any questions so far from board members or Sarah, and you have anything you want to weigh in on yet, we'll get to the resolution in a second, but
I do not.
No.
No, I think Liz explained that very well.
Okay, all right, well, why don't we go to the resolution, and again, we don't need to read line by line, just skip a lot of the intro parts, because
All the whereas's.
A lot of this was, you'll have recognized from already seeing some of the beginning parts from the previous resolution we had on the inadequacy resolution we had, which now is converted to an adequacy resolution, putting it bluntly, so go ahead, Liz.
Okay, so, so basically, from page one through the middle of page three are all what I call the whereas's, which is setting forth all the steps that led us to this point, and then in the middle of page three of five is the first resolved, and do you want me to read or just touch base on what each paragraph?
Just, just touch base what they're basically
Okay, so the first, now therefore be it resolved, has to do with seeker regulations and preparation and content of an environmental impact statement, the second, be it further resolved, is to notify public agencies with a notice of completion of the draft environmental impact statement, that it was prepared and shall be filed, and copies of the draft EIS shall be filed in accordance with the seeker State Environmental Quality Review Regulations, and gives the section, the third resolved, that a notice of completion shall be published in the environmental notice bulletin, the E N B, and
So, there's one typo correction there, and bulletin, it has a G at the end, so take the G off.
Yep, good, and then, second to last, be resolved on that page is completion of the draft environmental impact statement indicates that a public hearing shall be held on the completed draft EIS on Thursday, September 12, 2024 at 7:00 PM, and that comments will be received and considered by the lead agency during the public comment period, which shall commence upon filing and conclude on Monday, September 23, 2024. Bottom of that page, be it further resolved, public hearing on the completed draft EIS will be held Thursday, September 12 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter in the meeting room, Town Official Town Hall at, is it 870?
I'm going to change that a little bit.
Okay.
Okay.
I usually have the meeting room name, and then the address needs to be
Okay, so
I'll take care of that.
We'll, we'll, yeah, okay, and then
Add name of the meeting room.
Yeah, like I normally do for public hearings.
Good, okay, good, good, okay.
I have one, I'll have one thing to add, but what, you finish up, Liz, and then
I have something else to add too.
Okay, okay.
Top of page four, be it further resolved, the public and agency comments may be mailed to the Secretary of the Planning Board at 870 Route 52, or emailed via the Town Official website at the planning board page, so.
So, that's what I'll change, Liz.
Yeah.
Let the chair go first.
Go.
So, at the bottom of page three, this is partly a question, but partly a suggestion, I think seeker recommends that the lead agency concurrently or coordinate other public hearings other than the seeker hearing with the seeker hearing, and so I think we could be scheduling a simultaneous concurrent hearing on the site development plan approval and special use permit on that same date, that's how I've usually seen it done before.
Okay.
I'll ask our planning, town planner and our attorney if that makes sense, because we ultimately will have to have a hearing on the site plan and the special use permit at some point, and it is logical and makes the most sense and is, goes along with what seeker recommends by doing it on the same day.
And so would we then
So.
Carry that, in other words, once you open it on the DEIS site plan and special use permit, you might close the DEIS hearing, but you would then continue?
You could.
The others, okay, just a thought.
It would depend on how things go, and
Okay.
So, I mean, I think the way I would suggest adding a be it further resolved, that the aforementioned public hearing will be conducted in conjunction with a public hearing on site development plan approval and special use permit approval for the proposed official self-storage 1292 Route 9D application at the same time and place as referenced above.
Got it.
And, so, if that sounds okay, I would suggest adding that. Does that also make sense to the applicants?
Yeah, I was going to stand up to ask exactly just that, so, I'm a creditarian though for flagging it for me.
Okay, good, thanks. All right, so any questions, comments from board members, or Sarah, if you have anything, any other things you saw in the resolution?
I didn't, I don't have any additional comments.
Okay, all right, so, is there a motion?
John, if I could interrupt, I'm sorry, I just want to change that last, be it further resolved, it's minor, to be made email to my name.
Yes.
Then the correct address, and then to provide my actual email address, rather than having to visit the town's website, so it's easier for the public and the agencies.
So, add your name, okay.
I'll take care of that, yeah.
And I just have one more procedural question before you vote on it.
Okay.
So, my recollection is your counsel had previously recommended or advised the board that, once we get to the completeness stage, that is when the application can be referred to the building inspector per the code for their input on the substantial similarity, does that need to be added to this, or would it be done separately?
I think since it's kind of a separate thing, we could do a separate motion on that.
Okay.
Again, this is primarily, well, it's almost entirely on the seeker aspect, although now we've added a public hearing on the actual actions, but we could, we could see if the board would be willing to do a separate motion after we do this resolution to refer this to the, I want to make sure we get the wording correct on how we're referring it, because it's not the normal referral to the building inspector, so I want to make sure it's the exact wording that comes from the town code
Okay.
If we're going to do it tonight.
Okay.
I mean, we could, we could also theoretically, I mean, we're not, let's see, we're not going to be meeting again with the applicant on August 8th, because I don't think there's anything else we need to do.
No, I mean, you could just put it on your agenda for referral to
I suppose we could do that, although if we can
If you can take care of it tonight.
If we get the right wording tonight, while we're working on adopting this resolution, if somebody could check out the wording from the town code as to what the actual wording of the referral to the building inspector is from section 150, 19.
150, 19, D.
D. So meanwhile, while we're working on that, is there a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of State Environmental Quality Review Determination of Adequacy of Draft Environmental Impact Statement for Fish Gill Self-Storage Facility 1292 Route 9D Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit as reviewed and revised tonight and authorized the chair to sign it.
Some moved.
Okay, Felix moves that, is there a second?
Second.
Joey seconds that, is there further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So that passes seven to zero. Now, one additional thing we should do in regard to the public hearing is a placement of a sign, as we always do for public hearings, it's the same with the seeker hearing, and this will, actually, this is going to be a little interesting to fit on the sign, because it's, maybe we put two signs, one for the
Well, then we're going to say notice of public hearing, planning board, so we're going to need two signs.
So, we could do two signs, one for the EIS portion and one for the
Yes, agreed.
And just put them in appropriate locations, I would say, at the site entrance on Route 9D, because there's nowhere else to put it, really.
Both signs will be in the same place?
Probably one on each side of the driveway, so that they could be at least individually visible.
Don't worry, I'll get you the packet, Aaron.
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
So, that doesn't need a motion, that's just, that's what we'll do.
I just have a quick question too, because this was a discussion in our office with our paralegal, she wanted to make sure it was facing the right way, because I think we had to post
It's supposed to be double sided.
So, do you want it
That's up to the board, Liz.
Like perpendicular to nine, so
Perpendicular, I guess, I
Yeah.
So that both, for traffic
Yeah, okay.
People can see it.
So, in both directions of traffic, right?
And so, yeah, right, so, the fact that one will be on each side of the driveway perpendicular will, I think, allow people from both directions to be able to see at least one of them easily enough, and then, if they're interested, they'll stop and create a traffic jam and see what happens.
Or an accident.
Yeah.
No, we don't want to say that.
I'm just trying to find that section of the code, if you'd like.
So, let's set this up, so we're gonna, when we get the right wording, we're going, the planning board will refer this matter to the building inspector pursuant to town code, section, whatever the section number is.
150, 19.
One fifty nineteen.
Are you finding it, Debbie?
You said one five nine.
One five zero nineteen B.
One five zero nineteen, I'm trying to find it, I'm reading it.
One fifty hyphen nineteen B.
One five zero to S nineteen B.
Or did you find it?
Yeah, I have it up.
Great, thank you.
All right. So, I'll just read the intro for the context.
That's fine.
All right. So, "It shall be understood that the use may be allowed by special use permit of the planning board if it is determined by the planning board with input from the building inspector that the use is substantially similar to other uses listed in the district."
And so, I would, in a sense, call that an advisory opinion as opposed to the determination that he normally would give.
Yes, because the ultimate authority rests with this board.
So, can we do a motion to refer the question of... And what's the wording?
With input from the building inspector, so...
But what's the actual thing that we're referring-
Oh, substantial similarity.
Okay, the question of substantial similarity. Of the proposed use with other uses in the RV zoning district? Should we say that?
Yeah. So, the provision finishes to other uses listed in the district and is consistent with the stated purpose of the district.
Okay. So, would somebody like to move that?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Fred moves it, seconded by Felix. Further discussion? Does that sound good to you, Sarah?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that passes seven to zero.
One more question. I know it's eleven o'clock.
Okay.
We do have to file this thing now officially, right? We have to clean the text up and print it. How many copies do we need to submit?
Do I have to send them out to everybody, except for you, Liz?
Well, so even before that question, so there's the filings and notifications that Liz mentioned in the resolution.
I think if you would let us, at least get back to you Monday or Tuesday, to give us time to meet.
Tuesday.
Tuesday would be better.
Tuesday.
Sure. We have it queued up, ready to go to the printer, and we can actually have the printer delivered directly here.
That's fine.
But we do have time. I think the regs say that you have to have it filed at least two weeks before the hearing's happening, so we have time.
There are some agencies that will only accept digital, so I don't want you to give me copies if I don't need them.
Yeah, we've seen it done where the notice of completion gets sent to them with a link to where you find it on your website. That's another way to do it.
That's exactly what I would love to do.
Yeah. Okay, let us know.
Yeah, in terms of like public review copies, we'll just need to figure out like where they would be kept and how they would be accessible.
It's going to be my office, more than likely. I'll take care of it.
As a board member, I've declared that I do not need another version of it, because I will use this one, even though it has redlined.
That's fine.
The one that we do submit will be dated tomorrow's date, just to go in line with the fact that it was approved tonight as complete.
Read.
Okay. All right, so just let us know, thanks.
And the notice that will be filed on Tuesday, because I'm not in. So, it's fine. The timeline's fine.
Right, so the filing date will be Tuesday, July, whatever Tuesday is.
Seven, sixteen.
Well, once we're notified how many copies, it might take the printer a couple of days to do it, but next week, probably.
Okay.
It'll be dated the twelfth, though.
Definitely. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you so much.
Good night.
So, that pretty much does it for tonight, people. Anything else that board members or staff would like to bring up?
Not tonight.
Not tonight. There's this thing hanging out there about the Downstate Correctional Facility that some of us have talked about amongst ourselves, but that's going to be a long-term thing that we can talk about at some other time. So, the next meeting of the board is scheduled for Thursday, August eighth, 2024. The submission deadline for that meeting is Wednesday, July twenty-fourth, at two thirty. And as I said, I will not be able to attend that meeting, so I will ask Vice Chair Anthony Brozier to fill in for me as chair. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, motion denied.
Felix moves it. Robbie and everyone else seconded it, and we all vote in favor of it. So, let's get out of here. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody, especially board members.